All right. Welcome to everybody and the cat. It's the May 20th, 2025 meeting of the City Council of Lewisville, Colorado. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Kern. Present, Mayor Pro Tim Dickinson.
Would you join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item on the agenda is public comments on items on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. This is a time when people from the community, either in the chambers or online, can provide a comment of up to three minutes by coming up to the podium and just, well, first of all, throwing out a card, I guess, and bringing it to the clerk at the end of the dais here. When she calls your name, come up, make sure you give your name and where you live. You don't have to, you don't have to give the address, just the city that you live in. You can speak for up to three minutes. You don't have to speak for a full three minutes. If you have somebody who's willing to cede their time to you, you can speak for up to six minutes. And again, you don't have to do that. You don't have to speak for the full amount of time. We ask the folks here to not clap or boo or otherwise respond to the person at the podium, mostly because we, it's intimidating to go up to give a public comment, and we want to make sure people feel comfortable, or as comfortable as they can doing that. So if you can help us out with that, that'd be great. Do we have anyone who wants to give a public comment?
Good evening. My name's Sarah Stanton. I'm actually Ward Two in Lewisville. I'm the co-chair of the Cultural Arts Advisory Board, and I'm just here to invite everyone to the block party that we have coming up. It is on Sunday, June 8th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. This is our fourth time hosting it, and it's hosted at Fire Station, one just down the street on Main Street. If anyone has been there, last year, we're going to have a few repeats. We're going to have the carnival games, arcade bus. We're going to actually have a characterist here this time, lots of treats, local food trucks, kids' games, and of course, we're going to have some music by The Guardians. So if anybody wants to attend, we'd love to have council come out and see the events that we host, if anyone's interested in seeing what the board puts on.
Thank you.
Next up is Jessie Della Plane, followed by Dylan Roof.
Hi, I'm Jessie Della Plane. I am in Lewisville off of Dire Road, and I had a comment about the proposed King Supers development at the Lowe's site.
I'm going to stop you, not because I don't want to hear what you have to say, but that item is actually on the agenda tonight. So this is-
Do I speak on that later?
Yes, you may. We will definitely take public comment on that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Dylan, we're not able to hear you, but it looks like you're unmuted.
We'll give you a couple more seconds, Dylan. We're probably going to have to move on. Do we have any other public comments? We can try to come back to Dylan in a little bit if we have other comments.
Nancy Kerr Armstrong.
This is of a personal note that has to do with a group of individuals in town who are now being, making an effort to adhere to this new fire hardening code. And I don't know if any of you have gone out and talked to any of these folks that are now having to level up, but with the limited number of materials that you all have approved, the cost is exorbitant. On the flip side, the tariffs are going to make this obscene. On a 12-foot-by-8-foot deck, that additional fee is $6,000. I want you to stop and think about the retired people and the young people we're trying to get here in town and what that's doing to them and their budget. So I'd really like us to revisit that at some other point in the near future for an amendment, to take a look at some other opportunities, because there are many other materials out there. And then I'll save the rest for my comment on ADU. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, is Dylan still there? Give him a couple of seconds here to-
Dylan, if you want to speak, you can unmute and try again.
Hi there, council. Could you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Coming through? Hello, council? Oh, well, I was hoping to actually call in today. I was interested in perhaps the establishment of some sort of like European Heritage Month and the influence that it has amongst people. I just see a lot of, you know, political unrest at the time, and I feel that, you know, the great city here of Louisville, Colorado, we could really use a White History Month to, I guess, to celebrate the people who founded the country and sort of the core principles of its establishment and why it was established, and, you know, all of the great people that had died fighting for it, most of which here in America were European, in fact, I would argue all. I just look at some of the great achievements of white people throughout history, especially within the country. I think of Henry Ford. He really kind of changed how, you know, manufacturing is done, and I mean, you could, I mean, the computer I'm using right now, the telephone, the car that I use to, you know, go to work every day to feed myself and my family, it's all thanks to, you know, mostly white people. So I just, I find it somewhat disingenuous for like a country where white people are the vast majority of the population, that we spend so much time celebrating African-American history or, you know, whatever. I don't see why we don't put an emphasis on like the white people. That's like the largest population group. That is the group who has contributed the most. I just don't understand it, and it seems, you know, this was a white-majority country back in the 1960s. It was actually over 90% white. And, you know, Joe Biden, he was actually talking about how within the next 15 years, whites will be a minority, and how that's actually a good thing, that that's a good thing, that like we're getting rid of like white people, like white people are, they're not producing, they're not doing as much. So we have like our politicians kind of openly celebrating this, and I feel like it would be a good thing for the council to perhaps consider introducing something like a white, you know, Heritage Month or a European Heritage Month, at least-
Mr. Roof, can I just ask one thing?
United States of America, it seems foolish.
You didn't identify yourself at the beginning or your place of residence.
And then, I guess, the actual, you know, positive result from it. So that's all I wanted to say, and yeah, hail Hitler, white power.
Okay.
On comments not on the agenda, one of the things that is sometimes frustrating for people in, who listen or are participating, is that council can't respond. Why can't we respond to anything that people say one way or another? It's because the items are not on the agenda. So anyway, that is important, I think, for you all to know. All right. If we don't have any other comments, let's go to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Council informational comments and committee reports. Do council members have any informational comments or committee reports? No? All right. City managers report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I just have three things tonight. So the city is seeking feedback on updates to our design and construction standards. This is the first update since 1994. The community can go to Engage Lewisville to find three ways to provide feedback and suggest edits. The window for feedback will close on June 13th. This next Sunday at Cottonwood Park, we have Afternoon with Los Dalias from 1:30 to 3:30 p.m. And then also, on April 14th, the museum hosted the Association of Northern Front Range Museums, in which staff provided training related to collections, which was well received by the participants, and they noted the, our museum, how good it is. So, thank you.
First time I've read the business is swearing in a Louisville pet mayor needs a little of cats, who I understand, but that's why I have to read the book.
I'll put just two sentences.
Yeah, just two sentences.
Hi, Hazel.
Hi. Excited?
All right.
Hazel's got, yes, she has.
Her campaign page.
She has campaign paraphernalic chat. Is that okay? It does say Louisville Pet Mayor. It's a little, it's a little bit in anticipation of this, but I have the cat's paw. I'll just read this and look for a response of some sort. I, Hazel Cat, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, pay attention now, the Constitution of the State of Colorado, the ordinances and the home of the charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado, and faithfully perform the duties of the office of pet mayor upon which I am about to enter. Louisville Pet Mayor of Louisville, Colorado.
Louisville Pet later. This is great.
She's so cute.
Yeah. She's fantastic.
Precious.
She's a real cute girl.
Eric, if we can get a, can we get a first photo, like I'm kind of by us?
Yes. One, do you guys like the holder?
Go ahead, Hazel.
Oh, Hazel, Hazel.
She should be good. There you go. If you want to stand by the dais before you come in.
Oh, okay.
I can tuck this into her vest.
Oh, yeah.
For now.
Okay.
It was sexy.
Hazel. All right. Hazel. One, two, three, say Hazel. Hazel. Perfect. Hazel.
On behalf of the Youth Advisory Board, we're positively thrilled to welcome Hazel as our newly-elected pet mayor.
This year's election was the cat's meow with 47 furry candidates, 953 community votes, and a perfect turnout at the meeting greet, which we hope becomes a tradition.
Congratulations, Hazel. You've clearly won the hearts of our community.
This is a lovely project, which I really appreciate the Youth Advisory Board for spearheading, and there was an awful lot of public outreach, great public comment, and visiting with the candidates. I understand it was difficult for some of the candidates, but Hazel came out on top. Great campaigner, by the way. She just has a way with people and understands the policies that are really important to our community for pets. We have a number of proclamations to read tonight, the first one of which is Pride Month. It's going to be introduced and read by Mayor Pro Tim Dickinson.
Thank you. From a very clear hate speech to wonderful pet mayor moment to pride proclamation, we've got it all. I'm really, really fortunate to get to read this. I am a father of three children. One is bisexual, one is lesbian, and one is non-binary. Literally, all three are queer, and it's fantastic. They're wonderful human beings, and I love them all entirely, and to read this proclamation is wonderful for me. So I will begin. Whereas, June is celebrated nationally and internationally as LGBTQ+ Pride Month, commemorating the 1969 Stonewall uprising in New York City, a pivotal, pivotal, I'm sorry, pivotal event in the movement for, I'll just slow down. I'm a little, thanks. For LGBTQ+ rights and liberation. And whereas, although much progress has been achieved, efforts to undermine the rights and liberties of LGBTQ+ people nationwide have continued to result in discrimination, violence, and barriers to full participation in society. And whereas, Louisville recognizes that visibility, advocacy, local engagement, and education are vital to creating a community where all individuals can live safely and free from discrimination. And whereas, the LGBTQ+ community has made and continues to make significant contributions to the culture, civic, and economic successes of the City of Louisville and the state of Colorado. And whereas, the progress pride flag symbolizes the history of the LGBTQ+ movement and solidarity with all members of the LGBTQ+ community as they continue to fight for recognition and liberation. And whereas, Pride Month is an opportunity to honor the history of the LGBTQ+ rights movement, to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality, and to celebrate Louisville's LGBTQ+ residents. And whereas, in June and in every month, the City of Louisville is committed to supporting the right of all its residents, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, to live- to live as their authentic selves. That's wonderful. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Louisville City Council, hereby proclaims the month of June 2025 as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ+ community. Be it further resolved, the pride flag will fly throughout the month of June, recognizing all LGBTQ+ residents whose influential and lasting contributions make Louisville an inclusive community in which to live, work, and visit. The City of Louisville celebrates the resiliency and ongoing contributions of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer-plus communities, and reaffirms the city's dedication to collectively work in building a safe and inclusive society that values all people.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move that we approve that proclamation.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. The next one is the Memorial Day proclamation. Whereas, the first national observance of Memorial Day occurred on May 30th, 1868, as Decoration Day. And whereas, in 1968, Congress changed the observance to the last Monday in May, and in 1971 standardized the name as Memorial Day. And whereas, from the opening battles of the American Revolution to today, we remember the more than 1 million Americans who have made the ultimate sacrifice in selfless service to their country. And whereas, we especially remember the 16 Louisville residents that gave their lives in World War I and World War II. And whereas, this is also a day to remember the more than 500,000 citizens who were prisoners of war, and the more than 80,000 who have been declared missing in action. And whereas, we honor the memories of all the fallen men and women who helped preserve the freedoms we enjoy today, and pray their sacrifice will never be in vain. Now, therefore, we, the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim May 26, 2025 as a solemn day of reflection for those that shall never be forgotten. I move that we approve this proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. And we have one more proclamation.
National Gun Violence Awareness Day proclamation, June 6th, 2025. Whereas, every day, more than 125 Americans are killed by gun violence, and Americans are 26 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. And whereas, city councils and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas, June 7th, 2025, would have been the 28th birthday of Hadia Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later. And whereas, to help honor Hadia and the 125 Americans whose lives are cut short, and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 6th, 2025, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas, the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 7th to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 6th through 8th, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives and lost human potential of Americans stolen by gun violence. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our children safe. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Louisville City Council, do hereby declare June 6th, 2025, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Louisville, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. I move that we approve this proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. The next, the next item on the agenda is actually a pair of resolutions. I'm going to read them both right now. We can probably refer to them by their short name, just resolution number and the series as we go forward. But the first is Resolution Number 30, Series 2025, a resolution amending the 2025 budget by amending appropriations in the General Fund, Conservation Trust Lottery Fund, Historical Preservation Fund, Recreation Fund, Open Space Fund, Perks Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Impact Fee Fund, Water Utility Fund, Waste Water Utility Fund, Stormwater Utility Fund, Solid Waste and Recycling Utility Fund, Technology Management Fund, and Fleet Management Fund for carryforward of appropriations and additional appropriations within such funds and adjusting budgeted revenue in the General Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Waste Water Utility Fund, Solid Waste and Recycling Utility Fund, and Golf Course Fund. And also, Resolution Number 31, Series 2025, a resolution amending the 2025 budget by amending appropriations and adjusting budgeted revenue in the Louisville Revitalization Commission. Just sort of to note the order of business here, we're going to open the public hearing in just a second. There will be staff presentation, and then we'll take public comment. The council will have an opportunity to ask questions, make comments. We'll close the public hearing and then take an action to accept or reject or modify the resolutions. So, open the public hearing and hear from the Director of Finance.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, mayor and council members. Ryder Bailey, Finance Director. This evening, you will be receiving a presentation on the City and Revitalization Commission's budget, first budget amendment to their 2025 budgets. This budget amendment is largely administrative. Its primary purpose is to carry forward capital project budget and appropriations from 2024 into 2025. The total project amounts are not adjusted in this process, simply being carried forward into the next year to allow for this important work to continue. This evening, staff is seeking your approval of the first budget amendment to the City and Revitalization Commission's adopted budgets. These amendments are largely administrative in nature and are primarily driven by the timing of capital projects. Also administrative in nature, finance staff batches amendments from previously approved council items that are not in the current adopted budget. These two sections collectively make up the bulk of the amendment. That detail can be found in appendices A and B. Today's amendment can be broken out into the following categories. Each bullet coincides with appendices A through F in this order. Capital project carryforward, again, driven by timing, this portion of the entry does not increase previously approved budgeted projects, simply carries them forward into the future year. Previously approved council adjustments to operational budgets and capital projects since the budget adoption last November. Certain staff recommended adjustments. Adjustments to sources and revenues, these are largely grants and often driven by the timing of capital projects. We shift the expense side of the budget. We also bring along the revenue as well. Inter-fund transfers, and lastly, adjustments to the revitalization committees, commission's budget. Resolutions 30 and 31 attached to today's packet are the official amending document and present the amendment by fund. The fund levels, the city's legal level of budgetary control. The bodies of the resolutions present budget changes summarized by fund, and the appendices to the resolution present detail line item, the greatest level of detail. The proposed budget amendment increases city appropriations by approximately $37 million, offset by additional revenues of $13.3 for an impact of $24.6 million. The proposed amendment to LRC's budget- These two sections collectively make up the bulk of the amendment. That detail can be found in Appendixes A and B. Today's amendment can be broken out into the following categories. Each bullet coincides with Appendixes A through F in this order. Capital project carryforward, again, driven by timing. This portion of the entry does not increase previously approved budgeted projects, simply carries them forward into the future year. Previously approved council adjustments to operational budgets and capital projects since the budget adoption last November. Certain staff recommended adjustments. Adjustments to sources and revenues, these are largely grants, and often driven by the timing of capital projects. We shift the expense side of the budget, we also bring along the revenue as well. Inter-fund transfers, and lastly, adjustments to the Revitalization Commission's budget. Resolutions 30 and 31 attached to today's packet are the official amending document and present the amendment by fund. The fund levels, the city's legal level of budgetary control. The bodies of the resolutions present budget changes summarized by fund. And the appendices to the resolution present detailed line items, the greatest level of detail. The proposed budget amendment increases city appropriations by approximately $37 million, offset by additional revenues of $13.3, for a net impact of $24.6 million. The proposed amendment to LRC's budget increases appropriations by $2.1 to approximately $4.1 million. I'm sorry, increases by $2.1 from $4.1 million to $6.2 million, offset by additional revenues of $1.25 million, with a net impact of approximately $870,000. I've got better detail of this on Slide 14, so I'll get to that in just a moment. So the next few slides correspond to appendixes within the docket of materials. This administrative portion and largest portion of the budget carries forward appropriations from last year into the current year for projects approved in 2024, but for various reasons need to extend it to 2025. This section of the budget amendment makes up the bulk of this evening's amendment, and that detail can be found in Appendix A. Keeping within A for a moment, I wanted to highlight a few of the continuing projects within there. A few examples would be the Critical Facilities Generators Program, that's grant-funded, State Highway 42 Corridor, again, grant-funded, playgrounds, partially grant-funded, a few other larger utility projects, such as the utility meter replacement project, Sid Copeland Water Treatment Plant, there's an administrative building and residual management project. And lastly, the wastewater treatment plant solids handling project. So finance staff batches previously approved adjustments throughout the year and since last November's budget adoption. This section of the budget amendment contains those adjustments. Further detail, including the council's specific approval dates, can be found on Appendix B. Few examples are the vacancy bonus incentives, the block party trailer, front-center project, library building improvements, wastewater treatment plant, drying bed media, and the water service line project. Staff is also proposing some appropriation adjustments to the 2025 expenditures appropriations for grants, an art sculpture funded by the URD, and adjustments to the solid waste and recycling fund to align with the contracted expense. In total, $483,500. This detail can be found in Appendix C. Within Appendix D, we have adjustments to revenues and sources, broken out by fund as follows. Again, these are largely grant revenues that are for capital projects, such as the generators, Highway 42 Project, the GOCO Playground, and some FEMA funds. Again, there's also an adjustment to the Solid Waste Republic contract to better align with the most recent contract. Inter-fund transfers. The net impact of this section is zero. However, appropriations are necessary to shift funding between funds. The Capital Fund is a recipient of funding from the Recreation for a portion of the D-CAR program project and impact fees, while the Water and Wastewater Inter-fund appropriations are driven by the recently approved inter-fund loan. The last portion of today's budget amendment is for the Lewisville Revitalization Commission. These were presented to the LRC on April 9 and relate to carryforward appropriations from the 2024 adopted budget. In reviewing the summary of impacts previously mentioned and upon adoption of today's amendment as presented, staff has calculated the impacts of the budget amendment and confirmed that all funds with reserve requirements will remain in full compliance with the city's reserve policies. A quick note for the column on the right, the asterisk for combined utility funds, that the 25% reserve is a minimum, not a target, in adherence with its policy. Here's that slide I mentioned a few minutes ago. At a high level, I'd like to summarize today's amendment by fund group. You'll note that today's amendment impacts both the revenue source and expenditure appropriation side of the budget. Looking at this way, you'll note the first row, the General Fund, that there isn't a great impact to the General Fund, about $300,000 or about 1% of the General Fund's operating budget. Continuing down the rows, the next line are our special revenue funds. This includes funds like our Conservation Trust Fund, our Lottery Fund, Historical Preservation, Recreation, Open Space, and Parks. And this row is largely driven by the timing of capital projects. Capital Projects Fund, which is a large part of this amendment, again, is timing of capital projects and the funding sources to go along with them. The fourth row are enterprise funds. These are utilities and our golf fund. Again, this is driven largely by the timing of capital projects. The fifth row are our internal service funds. This is like our technology fund, our vehicle fund, so driven by the timing of those purchases. And lastly, the LRC fund. The Finance Committee reviewed and recommended for approval a draft of this proposed amendment at their April 17 meeting. No changes have been made since that meeting. The LRC reviewed adjustments to their budget at their April 9 meeting and approved it. This evening, it is staff's recommendation for city council to approve the proposed amendment to the city's 2025 budget and to the Lewisville Revitalization Commission's 2025 budget. With that, I'd like to thank you for your time and answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Why don't we take public comments, and then we'll turn to questions from council. Is there public comment on this? Okay, then we will come back to answer questions or ask questions of the director if there are any. Okay. Seeing none. Are there... Is there a discussion? Councilmember Heffner.
Yeah, just, thank you. Briefly, these did go through Finance Committee. As the Finance Director mentioned, they're almost entirely administrative in nature. It's projects that we didn't do last year that need to be brought forward into this year. Obviously, the money is still there from last year because we didn't spend it. And then certain items that we have approved the spending for, but not incorporated into our budget. Just a little bit of an asterisk on that one, which is the Finance Committee has been discussing some process improvement around how do we do midstream budget amendments. Right now, we approve the spending and then do the budget amendment after the fact. And we've been talking about finding a way to do the budget amendment at the same time that we approve the spending, so we don't have the lag. But with that, I think I would recommend that we pass both resolutions and appreciate everybody's hard work on this.
Like to offer an emotion? Not emotion, but a motion. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think I like that concept. I would worry that, I think what we do now is, we approve the spending so it gets done, and then it takes time to approve the budget. And so if we were to try to do the opposite, we might delay the decision to spend. So it is a little... I'm curious to see how that would work and if it could be as... be efficient. Because again, my assumption is the reason we do it the way we do it is so that the check can get written. But it does seem a little bit odd to spend money you haven't budgeted. So it's like, oh, mm, mm, okay.
Yeah. I don't think we've landed on the sort of the answer yet, but stay tuned.
No, I appreciate the thought there. But otherwise, I'm in total agreement and happy to support the motion.
We need a motion.
Oh.
I move to approve Resolution Number 30, Series 2025.
First. You get it. She got the second. First isn't a thing, Chris.
I know that. Any further comment? Actually, I forgot to close the public hearing. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have a motion on Resolution Number 31, Series 2025.
Yeah, I'd move to approve Resolution Number 31, Series 2025.
Second.
Any further comment? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you. The next item is Discussion Direction on Accessory Dwelling Unit Tap Fees. We have a staff presentation from our city manager.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the item before you tonight is ADU tap fees. When the ADU ordinance first reading first came before council, there was a question as to how staff's recommendation for tap, specifically water tap fees for ADUs. Staff has gone back and done an analysis. The Utilities Department has done a very comprehensive analysis of looking at three-quarter inch and one-inch water services, comparing small lots to large lots. What they found is that for indoor usage, it's pretty comparable between the homes on the small lot versus the large lot. The biggest difference is related to outdoor irrigation. And so because of that, staff has... There's two recommendations in the council communication report. One recommendation, one option is to... You could set a tap fee that would be equivalent to .2 of a single-family equivalent fee for houses that you would be eliminating irrigated turf. Or alternatively, .3 for single-family equivalent for ADUs, not eliminating irrigated turf. However, based upon the analysis, staff is recommending that we create a new urban, single-family residential tap fee that would not have a cost for ADUs. This is based upon the fact that regardless of it's a three-quarter inch or one-inch water service for residential units, the indoor usage is comparable. And so therefore, we do not anticipate that the addition of ADUs would greatly impact the variance of year-to-year seasonal water usage. It's really irrigation that impacts that. With the installation of ADUs, it's likely that you'd be removing irritable turf. And so there's a benefit there. With this as well, staff is recommending that we would still charge a wastewater tap fee for ADUs. If council approves this, what we would do is we would bring forward an ordinance amendment to amend Title 13 of Water and Sewer Ordinance to provide provisions for specific language approving a common properly-sized water and sewer service line between a primary residence and accessory dwelling unit, and adopting an urban, single-family residential tap fee that considers the service line as a whole parcel or lot and allows for a three-quarter inch or one-inch sized service line servicing a primary residence and one accessory dwelling unit. If you recall the discussion about the current ordinance that says that if there's an additional structure on the lot, it has to have a separate water service. There were provisions in the current ordinance that allows the Public Works and Utilities Director to approve that the ADU would go onto the same service line. However, to make it very clear, we would propose to amend the ordinance to specify that the ADU and primary residence could be on the same service line. And so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Let's take public comment, and we'll hold you to that. Do we have any public comment on this item? No? Okay. Well, that's going to be easy. You have to fill... Do you have a card filled out?
I saved my two minutes from before, but I'll do it again.
You don't have to save minutes. This is a new... It's a brand-new three-minute.
Like, brand-new, I'm good. I do have questions about that because they're currently dealing with this too in Boulder, as you know, now that the state is...
So can you just reintroduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Nancy Armstrong. I live here in Lewisville and have raised all seven of my kids, so here I am. We are really encouraged to see that the city is very proactively expanding the housing options because we all need it. And the tapping fees really are amongst some of the biggest expenses. In addition to that, when we go through all of the old guidelines around adding an additional property to your properties, what we're finding is that there is old information on the books that is a hindrance to what it is that we're trying to do now, which is to create safe, wonderful places to live. Or like me, my kids aren't going to be able to afford my home. My husband and I want to stay in our neighborhood. Where do you put mom and dad? So that's kind of like the park thing, right? We are wondering, not just in addition to raising the cost of this ADU that we're looking at, it is the tapping fees. So if we could clean that up a little bit, and then I don't know if we've gone through our books yet to see what's limiting us there, right? And how that's going to look. But I think that's something if we could do now, sooner than later, because there are a group of us that really not only need to do this so we can afford to stay here and live here, we want to do it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Next up is Peter.
Good evening. Peter Stewart, 1132 Jefferson Avenue. I want to commend staff for doing all that work and running all those numbers and producing all the data. I think that's really outstanding work. And it does point to the fact that indoor water usage and outdoor water usage are really different. And I think the data does support that an ADU with a single-family residence doesn't really increase the burden on water usage. Which leads me to think, well, it probably doesn't increase the burden on wastewater either. So I wonder why there would be a fee for that. So that's just kind of a question. But again, I think the staff... I would support the staff recommendation of the urban, single-family residential tap fee. I think that's a really great idea, and I commend staff for doing all that work and for including some of the design professionals that have reached out and had communications with them as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Any other public comments? Okay. Council questions? Councilmember Heffner.
Yeah, just one question, which is you mentioned the wastewater tap fee. Could you just give us a little more color detail on that?
Sure. With the analysis related to the water tap fee, the proposal to not charge it, that was based upon there's minimal fluctuation between the houses on the small lot versus a large lot, and looking at three-quarter inch versus one inch. With that said, the water tap fee, as you all know, is extremely high. And so for a three-quarter inch service, if I recall correctly, it's in the like $40,000 mark or so. And so when you're looking at a wastewater tap fee, it's much smaller than that. But wastewater, what's going into the wastewater system is strictly related to indoor water usage. And so with the addition of an ADU, where it could be anywhere from the minimal 500 square feet up to the maximum amount of 1,000 square feet, that could be additional loading on the wastewater treatment facility. And so therefore, the Public Works and Utilities Director is recommending that we still go ahead and charge the wastewater utility or the wastewater tap fee. With that said, if council wants us to analyze that, we most certainly can. As you can tell, I have to give credit, and thank you for recognizing staff. I have to give credit to the Public Works and Utilities Director, Kurt, and then also Cory. You can see, based upon the presentation that's attached to the council communication, the amount of work they put into this analysis and really digging deep into the water fees. We have not done the same analysis related to wastewater, but based upon, you know, what's coming into the wastewater treatment facility right now, the Public Works and Utilities Director recommended that we still charge the wastewater tap fee for ADUs.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Do you have a rough sense of the magnitude?
I pulled it up quickly, and I think it was about $3,500 for a single-family home as compared to that $40,000 water tap fee.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. Same thing. So you're saying it's a $3,500 roughly, like a one-time fee when somebody applies for it? Okay, instead of the 40... I guess the difference would have been $25,000 because we're going from a three-quarter inch to a one-inch because most of these are established homes. I was curious, and I... We're talking about like the change if we're adding an ADU to the property versus a lot of these, I think, are going to be ADUs that are currently part of the property, like a lower level that's being renovated to be a separate living space, but may already have like all of the taps in it.
Yes.
So I'm thinking that was part of the consideration. But how does that impact... Really, $3,500 doesn't sound like a lot, but if somebody's already investing, you know, $7,500,000 to try to get the ADU going, even $3,500 can matter. For a one-time fee, I'm trying to understand the value in charging that to a resident.
Yeah. I think part of that would depend upon whether or not when the original home was constructed where it had that basement usage, whether or not that was considered in the plan and the development of the fees, whether it was finished or not, related specifically to the wastewater fee. The water tap fee would not be charged in the situation specific to that specific instance. And so, you know, again, when you're adding the additional individuals, you're adding loading to the wastewater treatment facility, and that's what we're really trying to capture. That's then requiring that you look at, are any expansion... Are you needing to do any additional process improvements? Are you needing to expand the wastewater treatment facility because of this additional loading that's taking place on the plant? And so that's, you know, if council wants us to evaluate the wastewater tap... And so that's, you know, if council wants us to evaluate the wastewater tap fees, we most definitely can, like I said. At this point in time, we really focused on the water tap fees, and we're not recommending charging those for the ADUs. With the wastewater fee, it is something to consider, but there will be additional loading on the plant based upon these additional, the wastewater treatment facility, based upon potentially additional residents.
And some of that cost, just for clarification publicly, some of that cost should be captured in the monthly charges for wastewater, because if there is a higher usage, won't that be covered in some of those monthly fees?
So rates are different than tap fees. So tap fees are reimbursing for your plant expansions, for your large collection lines, versus rates are paying for your actual processing of the wastewater, the chemicals, the energy, everything that goes into the actual processing of the wastewater. So two separate functions.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fahy.
So following along on that, are these tap fees charged at the construction of the ADU time, or if a house is built that then converts, say, a finished basement or lower level into an ADU, but it's already got all of the restrooms and the kitchen and everything already in, is there an additional fee to then calling it an ADU?
That would have, that would be on a case-by-case basis to see how it was originally submitted. It would also depend upon whether or not they come in to get registered as an ADU. I'm sure there's a lot of basements out there that have been finished that this, they didn't, the property owners didn't necessarily come in, and under the next item, the ADU ordinance, there's a certain period of time that people can come in and get their converted basements that are now ADUs registered with the city. So it's really going to depend upon case-by-case basis what was considered at the time that the original building permit was submitted. If it was a finished restroom, finished, you know, kitchen, then that's very different than if it was just an unfinished basement that's now been converted.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Councilwoman Cooperman.
Okay, so, sorry, there was one thing in the packet which I didn't quite understand. So I'm just thinking about, you know, existing guesthouses in Old Town, for instance, or somewhere else in town, but, so would those, I don't know, would those typically have one service line that then splits between the main house and the guesthouse, or is it more typical for there to be two service lines?
My, and maybe Rob can answer this question better than I can.
Yeah, those would typically be on the same service line extended back to the ADU.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, and then another question I had, you know, if someone wanted, if someone wants to sort of bill water separately for their ADU, you know, there are probably a variety of ways they could do that, but I suppose one of them would be having a separate meter for the ADU.
So if it's one service line, it's going to have one meter. The owner could put a sub-meter on the service to the ADU, and then they would read it and then charge the renter the, you know, proportionate amount of their fee for that month. But in terms of the city's service line, it would have one meter, and that's what the city would read and charge based upon.
Okay, that's helpful, too. And then one more question, so somewhere down in those slides that Kurt prepared, he looked at other municipalities.
Yes.
And virtually every municipality had a charge if you went from a 3/4 to a 1-inch. And so I was wondering, you know, I mean, I sort of understand the reasoning for not making, not distinguishing between those two, but what about the case where someone does decide, oh, I need to go up to a 1-inch from a 3/4?
Yeah. So under this proposal of an urban, single-family residential tap fee, they would not pay an additional tap fee. They would need to pay to either upsize their meter, or they would pay to upsize their water service. And so the tap fee would not be an issue, it would be the actual cost to upsize the service and the meter.
Okay. And so the city is involved in some part of that, and they would, and we would just charge them the appropriate?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just had a question about the wastewater tap fee. I understand that analysis hasn't been done, and I recognize that the analysis for the regular tap fee is amazing, I think is what I would say. This looks like the data that, that went, that goes into, and it has gone into, the recommendation, hugely substantial, and the analysis of it is very extensive, and I appreciate staff's work on that, yours and Director Coher's and Mr. Peterson as well. So, but I wonder how long that additional piece might take. I gather that it's not something that we can do in another couple of weeks and come back.
Yes, when you're, when you're looking at wastewater uses, as I mentioned, that's primarily indoor usage. And so really, it's a question of, you have the existing home, which, you know, is contributing wastewater to the system. If you add an additional ADU, what's the additional, as I noted, loading on the system? So what's the additional wastewater that's being discharged into the system? That's really what we're trying to capture, is the cost associated with that, and that is in addition to the current home, the current wastewater tap fee that they already paid. And so there would be an additional impact to the system because it's strictly based upon indoor usage. And so it's a direct correlation and impact to the wastewater treatment facility, the volume of wastewater that the treatment facility is treating, which then impacts the process improvements that may be required to be able to treat that.
Other questions at all? All right. Thanks. Counsel, any, any questions, comments? Yes.
Yeah, I really appreciate the work. I understand you're modeling some of this after Denver, is that right? They do a similar?
Yeah, we're looking at the city of Denver, they've gone to a different model with this proposal of the urban, single-family residential tap fee. We're only proposing this for the residential portion. For commercial, we would still be evaluating based upon fixture units and our historical method for how we charge tap fees for water. This is, this would be a major shift to try to apply this to commercial. That's why we're only proposing to do this with single-family at this point in time. The large majority of services, water services in Louisville to residential units are 3/4 inch services. And so this is step one in reevaluating methodology. We will continue to look at what Denver's doing to determine if we need to reevaluate our methodology for the rest of the tap fees. That's a much longer-term project, but right now, we want to implement this urban, single-family residential tap fee because it seems more equitable across the residential customer class.
Yeah, well, I really appreciate, you know, I think some people forget that council people are not experts in things like this, and the education I've gotten from some of our residents and architects and builders, and the education I got, you know, from Kurt and Cory and other guys in that department, it is, it's really complicated, and it's really quite interesting if you're a nerd. And, and I think this is a really sound, thoughtful conclusion, you know, based on a lot of different information, and, you know, coupling that what we're talking about is ADUs, which are, you know, sort of naturally occurring affordable housing, on both ends of the spectrum, someone being able to move into a cheaper residence, and someone being able to get some income from a part of their residence. So both of those things are really great for creating, you know, more, some more options for affordable housing. And I think what, you know, really dawned on me and was quite clear of all the different conversations was the idea of lawns, right, and how much water we use on our lawns, and that, you know, additional, additional buildings kind of come with this, like, yeah, there's a pipe and there's water, and there's like, oh my gosh, there's going to be a bathtub and a shower, or whatever. But removing a lawn, sometimes, not always, but removing a lawn from a yard to do this is huge. And so, and so finding that balance and being able to recognize that, but, you know, I think on both ends of this conversation, one, just what seems to be logical data that shows that this is a reasonable thing to do fiscally for our, for our community, and also something that I think is, from a policy perspective, important, that, that we're thinking about how to make ADUs more affordable to create, build, and for people to come forward and be honest about the ADUs that they maybe already have, and zone them that way. So I think, I think this is all really positive, and I'll echo what a lot of people have said is, you know, the amount of work, I see Kurt back there being like, this was so much fun. So I think he had a lot of fun looking at all this data, but it is incredible amount of work to get all of this, and it really does help in the decision-making process, and I think mostly like for him, like he was able to come back with like, I have really good data that helps me recommend something to council. So I think this is just a fantastic example of resident staff and council all kind of getting together to figure out a good solution. So I'm, I'm loving this and in total support of it and happy to move forward.
Okay, other comments from council? Certainly would echo the comments that Mayor Protamis made. I am likewise convinced of the option two that you've presented as being the better of the two. Appreciate laying all of it out, and just sort of underscoring how much expertise we have on our staff on this, because they are, this is a really complicated bit of work and something that we all need and can rely on our staff to do a really top-door kind of job. So thank you. So I don't know if there's anything, frankly, that we need to do. I think the direction hopefully is clear.
Mayor Lee?
Yeah.
I did receive a Lee comment card, if you want to entertain that comment.
It's past the public comment, so I, I won't at this point. You know, I don't know that we really need a motion on this. I think the, just, we're going to be, we'll be fine in accepting the recommendation. Is that fair? Yeah. Councilmember Cooper.
Do we need to give any direction about wastewater?
Well, if you want to. I was not planning on it, adding that to the, this piece of it.
Meaning that you agree that the wastewater tap fee should exist? Like you're not, the $3,500?
Yeah, I mean, and we're, I mean, she didn't address any, any further change.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, the current one, yeah. So if you're interested in making a change to that, speak up. Direction clear?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to ordinance number 1892, series 2025, an ordinance amending Title 17 and Title III of Louisville Municipal Code concerning the regulation of accessory dwelling units in the city of Louisville. This is the second reading and the public hearing, which has been continued from April 15th, 2025, and advertised previously on the city of Louisville website. The public hearing is still open. We opened that public hearing there. I'll ask for the staff presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. So Jeff Hurt with Community Development. This is a continuation from the April 15th hearing for the accessory dwelling units ordinance. And again, as a reminder, this is to implement state law, to address a new state law that requires compliance by June 30th, and this is certainly on your work plan, noticing requirements have been met. I'm going to try to keep it brief because there was a lengthy discussion before, happy to go deeper if you would like on any of these topics, but I did want to just give a brief recap of the ordinance that was before you on April 15th to get your head back into it, and then a recap of the direction or the requested amendments to the ordinance that were provided by council on April 15th, and then a brief analysis of those amendments that were requested, and then a recommendation. So just a visual reminder of what an ADU can be, a number of different forms, and some imagery reminding you again of all the different forms you could see an ADU in. So the April 15th ordinance that was presented to council, I'll, I have two slides on this just to remind you. So the proposal is for one ADU allowed per detached, single-family unit, and to treat detached ADUs, basically the same as any detached accessory structure to be treated in terms of setbacks and height and things of that nature, and for an attached ADU to be treated the same as the principal building in terms of building height, setbacks, things like that. The ordinance at that time proposed a maximum square footage of an ADU of just under half of the primary unit, and that was one of the requested amendments to address that. The proposal also had detached ADUs, 20, up to 25 feet in height in Old Town, so it's five feet taller than the rest of the city to kind of address Old Town's unique conditions. There were size incentives that are carried forward in the ordinance before you tonight related to if it's deed-restricted as affordable, if it's an accessible unit, meaning accessible to folks with disabilities, or landmark, those incentives are still in the ordinance. And then the grace period for existing units is still in the ordinance as well, happy to talk about that. And then, at the time, their proposal was to treat an ADU like any other structure in terms of lot coverage and floor area ratio, those metrics that define how much of a lot you can have a building on essentially. So on to the requested amendments from council on April 15th. So I've got two slides on this and a little bit of analysis of these requested changes. So the first request was to allow ADUs on detached and detached dwelling units, that means row homes, townhomes. Again, these are all addressed in the, in the ordinance before you tonight. Second bullet point, to allow the maximum size of the ADU to be, go from less than half of the primary unit to up to 75% of the primary unit. There's some analysis in the staff report that shows sort of who that helps, it's really the smaller primary units that helps, but it does make a difference, that ADUs should not, ADUs in basements should not count toward the square footage maximum, so, and there's a bit of nuance to that we'll talk about. And that, I think, yeah, that attached ADUs would be allowed in front of the primary building citywide, before, there was a prohibition on that. So allow attached ADUs in front of the primary building citywide. I'm sorry, I'm getting confused here. So attached ADUs allowed in front of the primary building citywide, detached allowed only in front of primary buildings in Old Town was the, was the change request. So another request was to address flexibility for front porches on ADUs, basically treat front porches with the same flexibility as they would on the primary unit in Old Town, allowing them to encroach, and then to allow the first 500 square feet of an ADU to encroach into the lot coverage and floor area ratio minimums. And so that, that is, it can be a big help to a lot of properties in Louisville. And the last was to remove the tie between ADUs and the inclusionary housing ordinance, so that's completely removed altogether. And so in terms of some brief analysis of those changes, so the first bullet point just highlights that sort of the footprint of where ADUs would be allowed has a slight increase from previously. So there's an area of D-Lo, south of Boulder Road, where there's attached products allowed, row homes, townhomes, ADUs would be allowed there, so that slightly expands the footprint of like the overall area an ADU would be allowed in the city. Happy to kind of expand on what that means. Allowing the 75% instead of the 49%, definitely helps some of those smaller units, and there's a table in your packet that kind of reflects who that helps. One of the things that we looked at in the ordinance as it relates to ADU square footage, attached ADU square footage in basements, not counting toward the overall square footage. So the direction we got from council was essentially, as we understood it, related to the visual impacts of basements. If it's beneath the ground floor, the visual impacts aren't there. So the regulation before you tonight proposes that ADUs in basements do not count toward the maximum square footage, but they do count if there's a walkout basement because you have that three-story visual impact. So one of the other things we added, again, to address council's direction, detached ADUs, attached ADUs again would be allowed in front of all the primary units, per council direction, citywide. Detached ADUs would only be allowed in front of the primary unit in Old Town in the front setback. in Old Town, in the front setback, in existing buildings. And so happy to talk more about that, but the idea is, in terms of not requiring it to be a landmark building, but we want to sort of preserve the neighborhood character that's already there, and allow those existing smaller units that may be toward the front to be repurposed into ADUs potentially. And the last piece of analysis I wanted to highlight was, that allowance for the lot coverage encroachment of 500 square feet helps, by our sort of cursory analysis, potentially up to 30% of lots in the city, which was surprising to us when we did this analysis, how many are either sort of at or above their maximum lot coverage already. So that will be a, a really big help to a lot of folks. And again, Planning Commission recommended approval of the ordinance back in February. Their conditions were, are reflected in the ordinance, and they were on the previous ordinance. And so staff recommends approval of the ordinance 1892, as presented to you with the amendments from April 15th, and happy to answer any questions.
Why don't we, let's take public comment first, and then we'll ask questions and go forward with our comments. Do we have anybody who'd like to make public comments?
Michael Perkins.
And by the way, I'll say just before we get started, because this is an ordinance, there are two rounds of public comments, and you can speak first, and you can speak again after that, if you'd like to. So, take it away.
Hi, my name is Michael Perkins. I live at 229 Vulcan Street, north of Alfalfa's. We have one of the old tri-level homes. I've lived here for 27 years. My wife and I, we just loathe the, the idea of moving away from our fellow Vulcans. And we wanted to find a way to age in place, and to also bring in some extra income. One of the ideas we had was turning our upstairs into an ADU, but then, in order to have, in order to age in place, keeping our main living area on the main level by pushing back behind the house. However, when I talked to the architect, there was a problem with setbacks. And that kind of put everything on hold, but I don't know if it was in an earlier draft, but it sounded to me like if that addition was supposed to be for an ADU, that the setbacks would be the same as some outbuilding, like a shed, or something like that, you know, side and rear setback. And that gave us some encouragement on, on the proposal. However, that was if the pushback was the ADU. And my wife and I, I sent an email to the whole city council. Josh here was kind enough to respond. And we were hoping that we could juxtapose the two, seeing as how we're giving up our master bedroom and two other bedrooms for the ADU, and wanting to basically get back a little bit of living space, plus our, a, a master bedroom on the main level, so we don't have to worry about stairs and such. I think that's about it, and I would just hope that that would be added to the language or added to consideration for people planning to age in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Any other public comments? Right. First, are there any council questions of staff? Yes, Councilmember Hanlon, and then Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, I, I need some clarification. I'm not quite sure if I heard you correctly or not. And this is with regards to front ADUs in Old Town. Did I hear you say that you can convert what's currently the primary residence to the ADU, so you can build your primary residence now behind it?
That would be one way that you could meet that requirement. But basically, any existing building can become an ADU. That's, yeah.
Okay. So I did hear you correct. All right. Thank you for confirming that. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
I also have a question on the walkout basements for an ADU. What if the walkout part of the basement is the back of the house, where no one sees it, or sees that it's, that makes it two-story or three-story?
Yeah, it would still apply. So the way it's written, if you have, any part of your basement has a door that goes to the outside, then that portion would count toward the square footage. And so, obviously, we see a lot of these on the different slopes, like you're going on Via Appia, those types of units. That's the intent behind that, the visual impact.
So if it's a ranch with a walkout basement, it would be in compliance, because it's not a two-story, you know, it wouldn't be taller than a two-story house?
It's more about just, you know, again, to address the visual impact is the intent. So if there's an additional story there, the walkout basement is sort of the tie-in to an additional story. And so whether it's a one-story existing building, or two-story, two-and-a-half-story, or whatever it is, that has a walkout basement, it would count.
Even if it's not visible from the front or the sides of the house?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. Kind of a follow-up question to the, the conversion of a basement into an ADU, or lower level. If it's not, if it's, so if it is still subterranean, but it has an access, so maybe it's not fully a, like, a full walkout, so it's not, like, it's not a whole story, but somebody has, like, removed the earth to create an exterior access. I mean, you see this in other homes too, where it's more of like a walkway. Would that also, or is, are you thinking garden level's gonna count as, I mean, so half of the basements, half of the house has been elevated, or the basement's been elevated, so we have 50% of the basements exposed with windows? I'm trying to figure out where we want to draw the line for the visual piece of this, to allow people to utilize ADUs that may be mostly subterranean at this point, but at an access point.
Yeah, it was a challenging little, you know, issue to address in, in an ordinance. But they ended on the walkout. The way it's written now, like, if you have a window well, you know, with, with windows, like, that's, that's fine. That's considered a basement, and it would not count. It's really only if you have that full door that is an actual walkout.
Yeah, and then, so sometimes you'll have a dugout area where you actually have a door that comes to the outside, and then you walk up the stairs. And that's, so that would be subterranean. That wouldn't be restricted. The way we put the definition in was that the door has to be, the, you know, the grade outside the door has to be at or below the grade of the door. So if you're having to walk up out of a well, then that's subterranean, and there would be unlimited square footage for that basement ADU.
Thank you, Seth. So that would allow for people who have the subterranean to try to create additional access, like, instead of...
If they wanted to have a separate access, they could accomplish it that way.
Okay, without having to be disqualified. Okay. Thank you.
You sure you don't have any other question there?
It's not a question. It's, it's gonna be more of a discussion for us. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Yes, Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah. Could I just ask for a clarification about setbacks? So, an ADU, as its current, as the ordinance is currently written, would have to meet the regular setbacks for a primary residence on a lot. Is that correct?
Yeah, so if it's attached to the house, it's treated like the house, in terms of setbacks, yeah.
And if it's detached?
If it's detached, it's treated like a shed or a garage would be treated, yeah.
Okay.
Any other accessory building, yeah.
And then, so as I understand, the Board of Adjustment, someone could go to the Board of Adjustment to ask for some kind of variance. Can you just give me a sense, like, does the Board of Adjustment have certain criteria, or do they, do they just sort of decide if they want to give a variance, or how does that work?
Yeah, so they do, they do have criteria. One of the primary things is there's an unusual physical circumstance on the property that is limiting their ability to reasonably develop the property in a similar manner that others would in the same zone district, in the same neighborhood. So that's the heart of the criteria. It's, it's very specific. And so you're looking for, you know, unusually shaped lots, or existing, even existing structures on lots, or, you know, that, that could limit the ability to develop. Those would be classic variances that might be supported.
So some sort of hardship to...
Yeah, there's a physical hardship.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions before we move to discussion? All right. Let's, thank you very much for the, the work, because we had to do a lot of changes since, since first reading. So who would like to kick it off, as far as the discussion? I kind of figured...
So, thank you.
Councilmember Kern.
So I'll take this opportunity to say thank you. I, I really appreciate you putting the work and listening to us to try to meet a lot of the needs of the residents who are, you know, either in favor of this, or are the people who don't really love the idea of ADUs, but we're still trying to, you know, create an environment that is amenable to most people participating. So thanks for the hard work. I, I think the majority of the changes are excellent, and we took some from, like, a really great group of invested architects locally. I appreciated, they're not here tonight, but I appreciated their input and involvement. It helped some of our decision-making and, and working, you guys working with them for that. So, I get what I'm talking about. I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding how, when somebody has a home that already has a walkout basement, so it is already visually looking like a two or three-story because of that added basement, it's not an ADU. It's just a basement that's a walkout space. I'm trying to understand how there's a different and new impact visually, because now it's an ADU, that we would exclude it. I, I can see maybe on new construction, where the intention is for this to be the ADU, to have this limitation. I don't think I like this limitation being here for people who currently reside in a property with this style, and now we're telling them, "Sorry that you're, you know, your basement's 1,500 square feet, and you love for it to be like a, an age-in-place ADU. It's too big." And I'm, I'm not sure that that's the intent of what we're trying to do here. I think the intention is to try and make this easier for our residents to make a simple change to their home to create an ADU. So that's the conversation I'm hoping to have with the six of you.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember, and Mayor Protam.
Yeah, I think I generally agree. I think it's difficult. It's like, you know, there's a bit, it feels a little bit like two rules, like, well, if you're building it new, you can't build it like this. But if you already have it, then we're okay with it. So it's kind of like, well, do we want these big, three-story buildings where the bottom story that is a walkout really, you know, is an ADU? Like, well, no, we don't want you to build that. Like, yeah, but it already exists. Can I get, can I just kind of allow it? So it kind of feels like, a little bit like equity, in that you can't do it new, you can't do it old. Like, that's, that's not what we're looking for in our ADUs. But I kind, I think I kind of agree with you that if it does already exist, the idea that, you know, you can't have, you can't age in place there, you can't have your grandparents age in place there, because it's just too big. And again, it's not that it can't be an ADU, it's about square footage allowance and things like that. But it's like, yeah, we're not trying to have, really, an apartment building. We're not trying to have a first floor, second floor, third floor, they're all different, you know, occupants and all these things. And so I think I get both sides of it. I don't, so just for the discussion, I don't think I feel strongly about it. I, I, I think that, you know, right now, the wording is that you can't do it new build or current build. Someone who's coming in can't turn their basement into an ADU without that square footage counting. But, but that obviously applied to new buildings. So am I getting that your suggestion would be only for new builds, but existing homes, a basement's a basement's a basement. If it happens to be a walkout, fine, but you can't build that. So the question is, why can't they build it? If you're okay with the current one, then like, why not let a new building build it like that? Why, why treat them differently?
I think that, that the point would be the aesthetics, and that there would be intention to raise maybe some properties and build them differently, that would take away from some of that, knowing that they're trying to actually create this, like, first-floor subterranean, but not subterranean kind of lifestyle. And I think for people who have an existing home in, you know, some parts of town where there's some sloping into their yard, and so they already do have a portion of it that, that's that way, it's kind of like saying, "I have a two-story house, and I want to convert my second story to the ADU." I, I just, I think one of the reasons that we put this in, the thoughtful nature of it, is that a lot of times basements are the same footprint as the main floor of a home. So a lot of times, they are going to be over 1,000 square feet. And it was to encourage or to allow for people to convert that to the, to a living space, whether it's rentable, or if it's for themselves, or for a caregiver. And I just think that the intent was, people who are already in a home can make these modifications, either to provide additional housing within Louisville, for themselves or other people. And I think if we're talking new residential construction, which not a ton of large, single-family homes with walkouts is, you know, happening, but I think there, I can see the aesthetic limitations, but the people who already have it, the aesthetic's already there. So you're not changing the aesthetics, because you're making it a living space as an ADU, I guess is my point. And I don't understand why we would say to somebody, "Don't do this. You're not changing the doors, you're not changing the windows, you're not changing the slope of your yard, you're not building anything new. You're just finishing the interior and making it a viable rental space, or a space for you to live in." And that's why, that's where I don't understand this. I mean, with the exception of, I, maybe people will still do the ADU, but now they're gonna come and say, "Okay, there you go, it's 1,000 square feet." And then, as soon as they get it, they'll finish more of the space? That doesn't seem to make sense. I, I think we would just say to them, "No, please finish it, meet the code, let us have it as a registered ADU, and we're gonna make it simple for you." I think that's my reasoning for saying, "I would like this to not apply to people's current builds, but only to new construction."
Let me ask about that, ask staff about that distinction a little bit more. I know you've sort of referred generally to aesthetics, but can you dig a little bit deeper about the reason for treating new and, and existing construction differently?
So, so I don't think we're, so I think the ordinance as drafted isn't proposing to treat new and existing construction differently, but I think the, I, I just think it's a, there's no right or wrong answer to this. I think it's gonna be a community preference. And some of the input that we got was in established, single-family neighborhoods, to try to limit the impact of ADUs. That's often an aesthetic impact, but, you know, some people worry about other impacts from how many people are living in the ADU. So they are meant to be accessory to the single family. So, you know, if you're, if you're taking existing, just to use an example, like, if you had an existing home, and we didn't care how you changed the interior of it, you could have, like, a 4,000-square-foot home divided into a duplex and have two 2,000-square-foot units using the same thought process. Again, if, if, you know, I, I think if the city council wants to allow more density and duplexes, there's other zoning options that are maybe more clear and transparent about the intention. So that's part of this, the recommendation is, in a limitation of size, in general. Some of it's aesthetic, some of it's just about the overall density and those impacts from ADUs.
I guess I'm curious, using that logic, how does it differ whether it has a walkout or not? So we're saying if it's subterranean with no walkout, there isn't going to be a limitation. We'll let people have the, the, whatever the square footage that would fit in their basement to finish.
Yeah, there, there may not be. I think we were taking kind of council's direction, and we, our interpretation is you wanted to consider subterranean finishes to not count towards the square footage. So, because we thought the direction was subterranean, then we were struggling with this question over the last few weeks about walkout basements.
Oh, okay.
So we, we, we thought that was the direction of council. I think if council wants to allow walkout basements, because you think that's appropriate for the community, I don't think there's, you know, there's anything wrong with that. I think we even have language available, just so you know, for a simple fix, if you want to allow that.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, Councilmember Hanlon. Yes, Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you. I'm, I'm open to looking at that verbiage that staff has written. I am though hesitant on differentiating between established and new builds. You know, and an example that comes to mind is not all the fire rebuilds have been completed. And so then those who don't have the resources or had challenges to build, now they can't get, you know, that walkout ADU option. And, and then if we make an acceptance for those who are finishing the fire rebuilds, then I think it's just, don't differentiate between the two at that point. There's not, I mean, there are quite a number of places in town where you can have this option, but there's also a number of options in town where you actually can't have this option because you would exceed height limits in your area. So I think if we're going to do it, then don't differentiate between the two is kind of where I'm leaning at this point in time.
Yeah, Councilmember Feh.
Yeah, I'd build on that. I'd, I'd still see the, the issue as being, is the walkout basement visible from the front of the house? If you're driving down the street and you don't know if they've got a walkout basement or not, I don't think it makes a difference if there's an ADU down there or not, personally.
I guess I would, I would disagree about that just because there's a lot of, well, there's a lot of, um, homes where the walkout basement goes, you know, toward the street. For example, I can think of a few of them. Yeah, I can think of a few of them. I hesitate, I'm not going to name names, but along via appia. And so, you know, I, I think, I think it's not just the, the aesthetics in the front, at the back. I agree with this not distinguishing between, um, current and future or built already and to be built, um, ADUs, walkouts, yeah.
So I, I was just gonna actually go the other way and say, um, you know, look, I think this is sort of a, a pretty marginal issue, but to the extent we do it, I, I'm comfortable with setting some cutoff date, you know, whether it's the date we pass the ordinance or Jan. 1 of next year. And if your basement is built, if your walkout basement is built before that date, um, you're not going to hit the size limit. And if your walkout basement is built after that date, you're subject to the new rule. I mean, that's, that to me, I think that's what Judy is proposing more or less. And that to me makes sense, not to limit people who didn't plan the size of their basement around this ordinance and the basement is already there. There's nothing, there's no sort of bulk and size issue because the basement is already there. Certainly, we wouldn't want to do it and say, oh, existing basements, because then you could build the basement without the ADU and then come back a year later and say, well, this is an existing basement, I'm going to make it an ADU. I think you'd have to have a date cutoff for when the basement is constructed. I'm also sensitive to the fact that we don't want to make this so complicated and try and address every possible permutation, but this one strikes me as fair. And if somebody has language already written, I'm happy to look at it.
Others? Yes, Councilmember Hamilton.
I certainly appreciate, you know, the option to try and, and provide some flexibility in the date. It's still, I don't know, it still doesn't take away my concern of you have to have the money now and have the resources now to be able to build within that timeline. What if somebody doesn't have that, right? What if they're saving to build in 10 years from now because they can't afford to build it in the next five years or something with that timeline, like?
But I, I don't think we're, it's not that we're taking away the walkout basement from anyone, it's just the person in five years would have to make it fit within the size limit, whereas the person who already finished or is sort of substantially making progress toward finishing their walkout basement, isn't going to be denied the opportunity to do an ADU because they didn't plan ahead for an ordinance they didn't know existed. But Judy's concern is this ordinance imposes a size limit on walkout basement ADUs that if you have a walkout basement today, that's 2,000 square feet, unless you sort of subdivide it somehow and, and make a round peg in a square hole or whatever, it's going to be hard for you to do your ADU. It's, it's trying to, I forget what you're supposed to say now, instead of grandfathered in, but the correct word for grandfathering in, um, the people who already have basements that maybe don't make sense under the ordinance.
Yep, Councilmember.
Yeah, I, I think this has all been great conversation. I think the root, the root of it, right, is like, there's a big difference between building an ADU and using the, the lower part of your building as an ADU. Sort of like, hey, I'll, I'll live in my one bedroom and run out the house to a family as long as you're cool with me like living with you guys and I'll be in this one room. It's like, it's all within the house. So it just isn't as important in my mind to regulate because it's all sort of within that structure. But as soon as you build a six-car garage with a 3,000 square foot house on top of it, you're, this is a different, what do you, no, this is a whole different story. So if you have a big house, then you have a big basement and so you have a big ADU, but you're not affecting the, the, the look of the neighborhood because the house already exists like that. And so the portion of it that's a, that's an ADU versus what's the regular use of the home, just doesn't seem that important. Whether you built it like that or you're repurposing it like that, what we're trying to avoid is I have a house and I'm going to build this huge ADU next to it. And we've got so many rules that make that impossible. But do we need a rule that makes your big basement not usable as an ADU? I just don't think we do. So new, old, otherwise it's like, yeah, it's a basement. You can do what you want in your basement. It doesn't affect anyone but you. That's, I think, kind of where we're, where I'm leaning.
Let's take a breather from council comment because we get a chance to have more public comment for a moment. Are there additional? Oh, there's no additional public comment. Okay, well, we got a, all right, well, um, I think, go ahead. Pick one of yous.
Part of the challenge is, as I studied, uh, city planning in college, right? So that's a challenge, but.
If you could state, state.
I'm Nancy Armstrong. I live on Tamarisk across from Coal Creek Elementary.
Thank you.
I think part of the confusion here is too, that some people, the definition of an ADU as an accessory dwelling unit historically, because there is a history to it now, is that it's a separate unit, all in of its own, separate from the home. In the other two cities, my husband and I have moved 17 times across this country and lived in a lot of places. In the other, in the other two cities that we have just been in, the way that they've addressed these issues in the basement is that your home is then converted into a duplex. That gets you into another area when it comes to utilities and blah, blah, blah. Easy to fix, not a problem. So I think that's part of it too. It's not just the aesthetics of what it looks like. What do you really call it and what does it look like? I mean, do you want a guy with a 6,000 square foot home putting in what essentially could end up being three 2,000, you know, 2,000 square foot units? So maybe it's just a matter of language, changing what it is, right? So that's my two cents. I think that might help with the basement ADU, two separate things.
Thank you, Nancy. Yes, Michael.
Hello again, Michael Perkins, 229 Vulcan Street. I liked, I liked Dietrich's idea of having a cutoff date, but when it comes to homes with basements or not, most people want to keep some of their junk in their basement. Okay? So if you just say, you know, a basement ADU can be as much as 1,000 square feet or 1,200 square feet or whatever, if you have extra, then that's just partitioned off to you and the rest is ADU. I don't even see why there is, is an all or nothing thing. If you have a, if you have a very large basement, give some of it to the ADU and give the rest to your crap. So, um, new, existing, adapted buildings, I don't think it's a big problem. I think the discussion is moot. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. All right, any other public comment? None online? Okay, then back to us. You know, I'm, at this point, might ask for a motion and we could argue about, you know, making changes to it. So yes, Councilmember Cooperon.
So I just wanted to make a comment and then actually ask one more question.
You're not taking my.
Sorry.
Okay, that, I get it.
I don't know, maybe I forget our discussion from last time somewhat, but, you know, I didn't think we were so interested in making this distinction about walkout basements. So I'm generally in agreement with what Councilmember Kern was saying and what others have said as well. I did want to ask one little question, not to bring up another, or maybe not to bring up another whole issue, but, so if someone has a basement and they also build a detached ADU, they can't have their basement be an ADU and that detached structure be an ADU? Is that correct?
Correct, yeah, that'd be two, that'd be two units and out of compliance, yeah.
Right.
Two ADUs.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
I'll make a motion then, that we amend ordinance number 1892, series 2025.
Why don't you first?
Pass it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Offer to.
Offer to pass ordinance 1892, series 2025.
Did you have something to add to that?
Yeah, with an amendment, sorry. Yeah, thank you. That we do not limit or distinguish between the lowest level, the subterranean, partial subterranean level of a home for, with walkout or not, that there be no distinction.
We can give you more specific guidance of that direction you want to go in terms of the actual language with your, yeah.
Let's get a second first.
Second.
Okay, further, further discussion. I, I, I want to respond, or I, I want to be sensitive to the city, city attorneys.
Yes, we, we do want specific language read into the record so that everybody knows what is being considered and voted on. Do you have language? If not, I can offer some language.
Yeah, it's, it's, so if you look at, in your packet on page five of the ordinance, that's where the language lives that says this. The amendment would be to remove the last three sentences of subsection C, I believe. Let me see here. Sorry. D, okay, sorry.
Beginning with however.
Yes, yes. So you keep the first sentence of that subsection or remove the last three sentences and it would only say ADUs and basements period, but not count. So it would be a walkout or not. Does that make sense?
Can we be clear about what section we're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, and I have a question too. And it is subsection D.
Of section three?
Yep.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Let me, it's 1716035B3D. And Jeff, would we also need to delete the below grade in the first sentence so that it would read attached accessory dwelling units located in basements?
I think it should still.
If you're allowing walkouts, then having below grade might make that unclear.
I don't know, I, whatever you think would be the strongest to administer, I think both could work.
Yeah, I mean, I think my preference would be that we also delete below grade if, if the purpose of the motion is to just allow ADUs without any size limitation in basements, whether they are walkout or not.
But the intention is still that they are still at least partially subterranean. It's not meant to be that like, oh, there's a basement that's two feet below the ground and eight feet above, but we're calling it a basement. It should be the intent of a, you know, subterranean space, like the foundational empty space below a home. It's just that depending on how the, the grade of the lot is, if it does have an exterior access walkout, it should not be excluded, but it still should be a subterranean or below grade or at least partial. Maybe it can say that, that it would be a partially below grade, below grade or partial. It shouldn't be completely excluded.
Right, so we, we do not have a definition of basement in our zoning code. So I think it might be something we're not prepared tonight to actually have that, or at least at this moment. We could, so I think we could leave, so I think we could go by common definitions and if that is an issue, we can come back with further amendments. Might, maybe one way to do it, if the city attorney is comfortable with that. Or we could come up with a definition if you wanted, I would maybe recommend taking a five to 10-minute recess and we could try to come up with a common definition.
We're going to be taking a break shortly. I, let me, before we do that, um, Councilmember Hefner shot up his hand and I think he's got that idea.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, the, I think the problem with the, the grade piece is if it's a walkout basement, part of it is below grade and part of it is at grade. It has to be for you to walk out of it. I, I have some language here on the date cutoff idea. I wasn't sure if we had support for that, but I'd be happy to read my date cutoff language, which I think dispenses with the need to deal with above or below grade.
Let's, um, we've got a motion and a second.
I'm, I'm asking the sponsor of the motion.
To.
How would that dispense with that?
It, it would just use what our, um, our staff have already drafted, which defines walkout basement and uses the phrase below grade basement, but it, it would basically, I can read it and you'll see how it works. So it would change that same section to say, uh, attached accessory dwelling units located in below grade basements and in walkout basements constructed on or before December 31st, 2025, shall not count toward the maximum size limitation, yada, yada, yada. However, attached accessory dwelling units located in walkout basements constructed on or after January 1st, 2026, shall be subject to maximum size limitations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, for the purposes of this section of walkout basement. And then it goes on to define walkout basement.
I like that language and that does make sense. I would either want to kind of build on Councilmember Hamilton's point of the Marshall Fire rebuilds and put an exception for the Marshall Fire rebuild or extend that date from 25 to 27.
We're starting to get. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure we're at a place where we can draft. If we add all of these things together, I guess I would look to staff and city attorney as to whether this is doable or whether this needs to come back. If, if we added, if we added the language that Councilmember Hefner suggested to the motion on the.
Right, so you have a motion on the floor.
Yes.
So you need to dispense with that motion now. So it can either be withdrawn or that can be taken as a friendly amendment to the motion, which the movement and the secondar could agree to.
Yeah, or a substitute.
Right, but I think that with the original, um, motion, the hangup is what's a basement? And so maybe that could be cured by just saying attached dwelling units located in basements that are partially or fully below grade.
Perfect, I accept that.
And then the, the last two sentences beginning with however would be deleted.
I would accept that.
I would accept that.
Okay.
When it comes to the timing, I, I don't find that necessary. I would not accept that.
Yeah.
I wouldn't put a date on it.
All right, so let's articulate the motion as amended in a friendly way.
So.
I'm just, well.
Looking to the city attorney.
I'm looking to the city attorney because she just, we're putting extra pressure on her, I realize.
Give me one moment, please.
If, if you want a break, we can take a break right now.
I don't need a break, I just need literally a moment. Okay, so, um, subsection 1716035B3D would read attached accessory dwelling units located in below grade basements that are partially or, wait, sorry. Yeah.
Just, hold, hold on, she's getting it.
Okay. Attached accessory dwelling units. Attached accessory dwelling units located in basements that are partially or fully below grade in residential structures, wait. Okay, last time. Attached accessory dwelling units located in basements that are partially or fully below grade shall not count toward the maximum size limitations in this subsection three, period. Rest deleted.
Thank you, I accept that.
Okay. Any further comment on the motion? Yes?
Yeah, I'll just, I, I support it, and, I mean, I think it's a substantial broadening of what we're doing, right? As long as your ground floor is a couple feet below grade, you can have basically unlimited size. It's an exception to the size. I think that's great, but I just want to be clear, that's what we're all trying to do.
Right, I, I had similar concern, but I'm, I'm fortified by the fact that, like, the building itself, the home itself, has a limit of total size. Like, it doesn't mean suddenly you can build unlimited size house. It still has to be the right size house for the lot. It's just the way in which you're using it is not as limited. So I'm, I, I, I hear it and I'm fine with it.
It, it's, put it, put it a different way, it's allowing a dramatically larger ground floor ADU than what would be allowed for something that's detached. I mean, multiples you could have, on a big lot, you could have quite a large ground floor ADU, which I think is probably a good thing.
Yeah, that is correct, and is there, and this is just maybe is rhetorical perhaps, but do we have any concern about kind of privileging that kind of structure over the other sorts of structures that being so much smaller than that? And that is, maybe it's, yeah, it's privileging the very large homes that are going to use that walkout basement for an ADU. Do we have any, any challenge, you know, that's, if, if we do what we're doing, that will privilege those, and that may be just fine, but it's a policy choice that we're making. Go ahead.
But it would also still, if it's an ADU, it would still be limited in the percentage of square footage of the main structure in how big it could be. So it could be that it can only be three quarters or a half of the basement in order to be, what?
Right, like you're saying, the total square footage of the property.
Right. So it can't, it can't be unlimited in size.
I, I'm sorry, I thought the language in sub D says that the size limits don't apply to this class, so I don't think the 75% would apply.
It'd be really difficult to enforce, too, I think. With all respect to Mr. Perkins, wanting to keep your stuff on one, three quarters of it and not the full part of it. Anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I, I was thinking that the, the 75% would still apply, but it just wasn't maxed at an amount of square footage. But still, it couldn't be any more than 75% of the total square footage of the property couldn't be in that basement ADU. I thought that was like the overriding principle, and then it was size limitations.
If you want it, if you want that result, that's an easy fix. You just, instead of saying maximum size limitations, you could say maximum square footage limitation, and then you'd still have the 75%.
I like that, because that, I mean, that doesn't allow for then somebody to have a 2,500 square foot basement, and which I've no idea how this happens, but then you end up with only like 1,500 above it. I don't even know how that would be possible to have this, but just in case you've got this, I don't know what this... I, I kind of feel the same way, yeah.
Is there any further comment on that? We'll come back to it, Councilmember Hefner.
Yeah, I mean, I, look, I would just say I think we're headed in the right direction. For, for my money, I would probably get rid of the size limits on, on detached as well. If it's just like, we're gonna allow you to build what you could build on the lot anyway, right? And you can build that, that second garage, it's only ADU if you add a stove to it, right? If you add a kitchen to the huge garage, it becomes an ADU. You'd be allowed to build it otherwise. So if it, if it, the world was up to me, I would be similarly liberal with all of the categories, because you can build that on your lot anyway. It's just a question of whether it has a separate entrance and a kitchen. And I, anyway, I think that, I think that's my point. I'm happy we'll liberalize it for the ground floor ADUs. I do think it sort of gives those a weird incentive that the other ones don't get, but I can live with it.
I appreciate leaving it this way. I, with the, with the amendment that council made, I, I just, I think the intention with the subterranean spaces was to just make it easier for people to convert them into an ADU instead of making, making you have to partition it to do other things. Instead, if you have a basement and it's finished, and you want to convert it, it's done. I, I just don't want to make it harder for people who already have that. We're making all these assumptions that people are gonna start with nothing and build something. My thought is, what if somebody has something, and they want to make it into just a little bit more of something? So let's not make it harder by putting restrictions, and now they've got a finished basement that now some of it can't be an ADU. Let's just let them have it as their ADU if it's already done, they want it to be. That's, I, so I like the what we have done, changing the language to allow for the subterranean space or partially subterranean space. I think that's perfect.
Councilmember.
I move to end debate.
Yeah.
Second.
Are you sure? I want to make sure that when we were talking, yeah, sorry.
Is there a vote on my motion?
We, well, the question, the question is whether that last little bit of language that, that the city attorney had wanted about size, the square footage as opposed to size. Okay, all right.
Leave it as size.
Then we are ready.
Okay.
Then we are ready to vote on the motion, I believe. Can we read it? Yeah.
Oh, you want me to read it again?
Please.
Okay. I'm just reverting back, okay. So the subsection D would read, if the motion is approved, attached accessory dwelling units located in basements that are partially or fully below grade shall not count toward the maximum size limitations in this subsection three.
Okay, so it's passing the ordinance with that amended language, is what the motion is on the table. All right, let's take a roll call vote. Excuse me, yeah, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Yes.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Thank you all for the patience, thanks for, and then now let's go to ordinance number 1892. Excuse me, never mind, never mind. We are done, and let's take a break until 8:10. Just before we do that, any, any question about completing the matters that we have before us? Or any concern about that? Okay, let's take the break, thank you. The next item is Resolution Number 32, series 2025, a resolution approving planned unit development amendment and development agreement to allow grocery store and gasoline service station use at 1171 West Dillon Road. Open the public meeting, and do we have a staff presentation, Mr. Hur?
We do, yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilors, Matt Post, Planning Team, Community Development. The item before you this evening is a request for approval of Resolution Number 32, series 2025, recommending approval of a planned unit development amendment to allow a grocery store and gasoline service station use. store and gasoline service station use. This PUD was approved by the Planning Commission on March 13th with three conditions. We'll discuss that later on in the presentation here. As mentioned, the application is for a planned unit development amendment to allow a modification to the existing building and site which would support a grocery store and ancillary gasoline service station use at 1171 West Dillon Road. The property is in the area known as Centennial Valley. The site is 13.5 acres in side and located along the McCaslin Boulevard between Dillon Road and Centennial Parkway. There are four commercial pads directly east of this particular site, and this was where Lowe's used to be. I think all the councilors are familiar. The property was originally developed in 1996 as part of the Centennial Valley Parcel L planned unit development and was initially occupied by Eagle Hardware, if you all recall that. Eagle bought out Lowe's in 1999. Lowe's came through with the PUD amendment in 2001, took over the space, and Lowe's occupied this site from the PUD amendment in 2001 until they ceased operations in 2022. The site has remained vacant since that time. A bit of background here, we are in the Planned Community Zone District, subject to the Centennial Valley General Development Plan. The existing commercial building on the site is just over 150,000 square feet in size. There are 514 parking spaces that are currently there. As part of the application, the applicant is proposing to demolish a portion of the south side of the building. You can see that in yellow highlighted on the slide on this screen. That demolition will support a new curbside grocery pickup and pharmacy drive-through lane. This will be a King Supers marketplace use as proposed here, grocery store use that would be allowed via retail use allowances in the underlying zone district. The demolition will include, again, vehicle parking spaces and then a new pedestrian path. As accessory to the primary retail use that's on site, which again would be a grocery store, a gasoline service station is proposed. That is shown in blue on the slide on your screen. That's an existing parking area. The darker blue is the canopy. The area around it would be the maneuvering space around that gasoline service station canopy. The fueling service station will include five pump islands and 10 gasoline service pumps. A quick note, a gasoline service station is permitted as an automobile service station use in the underlying Planned Community Zone District. If you look in our use table, gasoline service stations are permitted as special review uses. This is a use by right in the Planned Community Zone District, so no special review use accompanies this particular application. The applicant is proposing 433 vehicle parking spaces, and that's a reduction from the 514 that are currently on site. 23 bicycle parking spaces are proposed. The applicant has requested a parking reduction with this application. We'll cover that in later slides. And as a staff analysis, as the council are aware, we utilize commercial development design standards and guidelines, the formal review, as well as our Louisville Municipal Code general regulations, including our PUD review criteria, which are included as an amendment to the staff packet. Grocery store use is permitted, again, as a retail business in the Planned Community Commercial Zone District, and under that same provision, the gasoline service station is permitted as an automobile service use. It's important to note that although it is a use by right, gasoline service stations are still subject to the supplemental standards or the performance standards that apply to gasoline service stations and that limitation on gasoline service stations, although there is a caveat based on a single-use retailer that we'll discuss further here. And so in that gasoline service station supplemental standard section, the code limits the number of gasoline service stations to six citywide, except that seven may be allowed when one additional station is proposed as accessory to a single-use retail center of greater than 80,000 square feet. So you can see the map on the slide here on screen. We have five existing gasoline service stations, King Supers in Valero up on the South Bolder Road Corridor, 711 on 96th, and then Conoco and Murphy's also on the McCaslin Corridor, and you can see the proposed gasoline service station in yellow. So this particular proposal would push the total number of gasoline service stations to six in the city. The supplemental service standards also have a buffer provision or requirement that states that no gasoline service station shall be located within 1,000 feet of another gasoline service station, except that that requirement is waived when that gasoline service station is accessory to a single-use retailer with a primary use of greater than 80,000 square feet. So this particular proposal is exempt from the 1,000-foot buffer requirement based on that supplemental language. Moving on to the analysis here in regard to modifications to the building, the applicant is proposing to paint the existing split-face CMU, which is an exterior material type, with a muted natural color that aligns with our commercial design guidelines. They'll also be modifying the building facade to include architecturally enhanced pilasters with different architectural elevations. The applicant's also proposing a strong focal point with a storefront system and new entry. Existing landscaping around the site will come into conformance with the prior approved PUD. Total number will include 66 new trees. There are an existing 103 healthy trees on the site. Number of those trees will be, a number of those 66 trees will go to replace some of those trees that have died since that site has been vacant and not irrigated. Then there's over 1,000 low-water shrubs that are also proposed to bring the site back into conformance to landscaping standards. Continuing on with analysis here, part of what staff requested with this proposal was a traffic impact study to see how the area would be impacted by the new use that's proposed. The study concluded the signalized intersections within the study area would operate at acceptable overall levels of service or a level of service D or better. A level of service is a measure of the delay at an intersection. One of the recommendations that came through that study was just to continue to monitor the intersection specifically at McCaslin and Dillon to ensure that that remains at an acceptable level of service. One of the primary recommendations that came out of the traffic impact study was a recommendation to extend the eastbound left turn lane at Centennial Parkway. You can see the graphic on the screen shows that median, that's Centennial Parkway where it meets Dillon Road. So the part of this application, the applicant will actually be extending that left turn Q lane to accommodate additional volume with this particular proposal. Staff are currently reviewing public improvement plans. That's also part of the development agreement. So again, that turn lane will be extended as part of this PUD application. Additional analysis, there are two waivers requested and one parking reduction request. The applicant is requesting a waiver from overall height limitations. See, the commercial design guidelines limit height to 35 feet. The applicant is requesting a waiver to allow the parapet on their entry system to exceed the height and to a maximum of 38 feet, 7 inches. You can see the, again, the graphic on the screen here, the highlighted red, shows the portion of the building that would exceed that overall height. Staff do support the waiver as requested because it allows for the adaptive reuse of the building, and it also contributes to the enhanced architectural design required by the commercial design guidelines, and the overall impact is minimized just based on the overall size of the site and the building's location on the site. Second waiver request is for relief from signage requirements. I won't dig into this too much. There's more detail in your staff packet, but essentially, the applicant is requesting a sign package that is similar to what was on a previously approved PUD for Lowe's. The signage as proposed here allows more flexibility and visibility, and includes a relief request from an electronic message sign on the canopy of the gasoline service station, advertisement of their pickup location for grocery store pickup, and then obviously a larger wall sign facing interior to the site to McCaslin Boulevard. Again, staff support this request just based on the overall size of the site, 13 and 1/2 acres. It's accessed from multiple points around Dillon, Century Place, McCaslin Boulevard, and then Centennial Parkway as well. So again, staff support the request for waivers. Additional detail in the staff packet, I'm happy to cover that if council has any questions, but it is similar to what was previously approved on the Lowe's planned unit development for their signed waiver packages. Again, considering the sign waiver here, the applicant provided some renderings that show what those signed waivers would look like. So you can see that primary wall sign at the main entrance, which is common of King Supers and King Supers marketplaces, and then the advertisement of the pickup area and the signage for pickup that would technically be considered signage, again, in our sign code and the application of our sign code. Also part of this application is the parking reduction request. The commercial design standards actually require 4 1/2 spaces per 1,000 square feet of retail area provided, utilizing the revised building area and the demolition on the south side. The applicant would actually be required to provide 614 parking spaces based on our commercial design standards here. There are an existing 514 spaces there, and so with the addition of the gasoline service station, the total number of spaces has been reduced to 433 based on discussions with the applicant regarding the nature of their business, hours of operation, customer flow, and then including the evolving shopping habits of consumers, which include that curbside pickup area, delivery services included. Staff find that the proposed number of spaces at 433 adequately serve the use, and we support the request for reduced parking on site, so 433 overall spaces. With that, staff do recommend approval of Resolution Number 32, Series 2025, recommending approval of this PUD to allow a grocery store and gasoline service station use with the following condition. The condition states that the applicant shall include landscape screening on the property boundary of 585 South McCaslin Boulevard. That's Murphy's Tap House. The Planning Commission hearing the owner of Murphy's Tap House testify that he was concerned about the visual impact of the gasoline fueling station or the fueling service station on the Beer Garden outdoor dining area. The Planning Commission requested a condition to further screen that property boundary with landscaping. Subsequent to the publication of your staff packet, the applicant actually provided me an agreement or an email between Murphy's Tap House and Kroger. Kroger will work with the owner of Murphy's Tap House to actually screen the use on the Murphy's Tap House site. That screening will also include additional landscaping per the communication that was provided, so staff recommend maintaining the condition as is proposed tonight. But again, there has been agreement and consensus between the two property owners. The other two conditions that were applied by the Planning Commission included the relocation of a propane storage area from adjacent to the Goddard School that's just north of that site. There was actually never a propane storage area proposed. There was just an interesting quirk of the site plan. And then the second one was drainage impacts. Again, the Murphy's Tap House owner was concerned about potential drainage impacts from the gasoline service station. The applicant provided a new drainage pan on the site that will convey water north before it gets to the Murphy's Tap House, and then we are still currently under review of our construction documents. I've consulted with our engineering group and will continue to work through those to ensure that there's no negative drainage impacts on that property to the south. But the applicant has satisfied those conditions, notwithstanding the condition that's presented tonight. And with that, that concludes staff presentation. Happy to answer questions. I do believe the applicant has a brief presentation or can use what's on the screen to answer any questions council may have.
We're delighted to hear a presentation from the applicant.
Hello. Good evening, council and mayor. My name's Dan Kraus with Galloway. Wanted to thank staff and everybody, especially Matt Post, for the help that we've had so far working on this project. It's been incredible, incredible asset to us to get us this far this quick. Second, another stellar presentation from Matt. We do have slides prepared and we're available to answer questions, but we don't feel that we have anything right now to clarify after Matt's presentation. But if you do have any questions, Galloway is present, as well as the architecture team from Neos and King Supers, if anybody has any questions.
Well, why don't we open it up to council for, actually, let's wait on the questions.
Sure.
Let's go to public comment first.
Thank you.
Again, folks can speak up to three minutes if they like. Do we have anybody? Looks like we have one online.
Up first is Jessie Delaplane.
Hi, I'm Jessie Delaplane, and I'm in Louisville off of Dire Road. And looking through the plan, I have some questions or would hope there be additional conditions for the traffic study that I guess I noticed the traffic study only evaluated as far west as Century Place. However, I would like to see that traffic study evaluate all the way to the next street, which is Century Parkway, I think, which connects, sorry, Centennial Parkway that connects South Centennial Parkway with Dillon. I know from experience that we get excessive traffic up Dire Road with people, you know, not turning around because it's a dead end. So they race up Dire Road, sometimes thinking they can make it to 36, sometimes not, racing back down the road, and there's not really adequate signage to indicate that that's a dead end. And I think that bringing in the King Supers would probably bring in additional traffic and additional people heading west. And so I'd like to see some conditions or additional traffic study to evaluate further west at the intersection of Centennial Parkway with Dillon, which is essentially the west side behind Home Depot. There's definitely a lot of traffic that heads that direction, and I think increased signage to indicate no 36 access residential street and dead end would be extremely helpful to reduce the impact of the traffic that we see on a daily basis on that residential street. And it's a martial fire, you know, impacted area, recovery area, and so the additional traffic has also been difficult. Yes, those are my comments.
Thank you. If you can fill out a card with, they're right outside in the, they're outside the chambers here, and just. Are there any other?
You want me?
Yeah, please call the next person if you would.
Next up is Julie Avaret.
Hi, I just wanted to clarify. My husband and I are the owners of the Goddard School, so there will not be propane storage near where our playground is. I just wanted to clarify that.
We'll answer that shortly. After we, we're just taking additional public comments and we'll make sure that that question gets answered. Go ahead. Please, just state your name and where you live, your town or city of residence.
Yeah, I'm Josh Mitchell. I live at 7780 Dire Road, next to Jessie who just spoke. Two comments. The left turn from McCaslin to turn west on Dillon can be a long light already. It's super short, which I understand there's not a King Supers there now, but that turn every day is long, so it's that there needs to be something, that traffic study, as she said, needs to be more in-depth on that section of the road because now there's going to be tons of cars coming in. You know, we realize that we live in a random residential area that backs up to a commercial area, which is totally fine. Like, that doesn't bother me at all, but sitting through three and four light cycles would be brutal just to get home multiple times a day. So it seems like that needs to be studied a little bit better and figure out what's going to happen on that traffic. My second comment is I don't really understand the need of another gas station over there. We've got two gas stations right there. If you want to put another gas station in town, put it where there's some. If you want to put another gas station in town, put it where there's somewhere more accessible somewhere else in town. I don't understand why we need one more right there. You know, there's no one across the highway. I know that's not Lewisville, but there's one there. It just seems very redundant and kind of ridiculous. You know, I know that commercial buildings bring tax base, and we all need that, but I don't think putting another gas station right next to one other one is a good use of that space. Could be something much better done with it later. You know, if they're going to reduce parking, another restaurant, I don't know anything else, but another gas station just seems ridiculous for me. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't, we'll go back to council questions and discussion. I'll ask the first question around, that was just asked online.
Confirmed there is no propane storage area on the north side of the building adjacent to the Goddard School.
Thanks. Okay, other, any other questions for staff? Otherwise, we could just get into talking about this, right? Yes, Councilmember Hanleyton.
One question about signage. Where else in town is there electric signage that is not, I don't, what the requirement is where, can you say the requirement for electric signage, please?
Yeah, so electric message centers is what they're referred to in the signage ordinance are are very restricted in the city since the adoption of our 2019 sign code. The only other electronic message signs that you'll see right now are associated with fueling service stations. So 7-Eleven on 96th, I believe Murphy's has one. So this particular proposal also includes modification of the monument signs that are on the, I'll let the applicant chime in as well, but on, I believe, the north side and south side of the site to advertise pricing. And then a canopy sign that would also be an electronic message sign on the south side of the canopy facing Dillon Road, again, for the folks that are coming northbound on McHastlin and then on Dillon Road.
And, okay, and then where else in town is there a canopy sign like that?
I don't believe there is. I'm not aware of another canopy sign in town where that exists.
Just another clarifying question for, based on the question was just asked, are there other places, are there other gas stations in town that have two electric message signs?
I, I, I don't believe so, no.
Because, because this one would be two.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Cooperman.
Just to quickly follow up on that. So as I understand, a freestanding electric sign is allowed in our code, right?
Yes.
And it's the canopy one, which is the, requires a waiver.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. The canopy EMC would require the waiver.
Okay, and there is one at the other King Supers, because I went by it today, just to be clear.
Oh, there is, and that, yeah, and that's, and thank you for clarifying that. That was likely established prior to the adoption of the current sign code that restricts EMC signs. So we would call that a nonconforming sign.
Other questions or comments here?
So, I kind of, thank you. I wanted to kind of follow up on on some of the resident concerns and comments on the traffic study and the, the nature of it, the expansive nature, figure, refiguring Dillon, the turns. I'm, obviously, the turn, the left turn onto Dillon has already been thought through, but what about that left turn from McHastlin onto Dillon that's coming from 36 that is already quite busy? It's not just for the residents. I would imagine that the retailer would also not want people to have to sit through many light cycles. That tends to deter business. You would want them to get through intersections as quick as possible to get in and do their shopping. So I'm curious about that. And the, if this is on the city or how we work with this, to add some additional signage on Dillon where it kind of turns into or dead ends into Dire? Because I would agree, I think if you're not local and you don't drive this regularly, that can be very confusing for people to understand that there, that isn't anything. That just goes into a dead end residential community. In fact, it doesn't even become, at some point, it ends up being not paved even anymore. It's probably most people signal to turn around. So I'm hoping that, that maybe there'll be better directional signage coming out of King Supers saying to people like, like 36, you know, residential and Home Depot and like, I mean, I don't know, or something that just indicates to people that they have to be turning at Home Depot to either go left or right instead of continuing down into a dead end residential community, because I think that would be confusing. Yeah, I had an architectural question, but I don't think we're there yet, so.
I'll, I'll start with the first question, and that's regarding, I think, the level of service at McHastlin and Dillon. And so part of the recommendation that came out of the traffic study was to continue to monitor that intersection to ensure it maintains an appropriate level of service. I'll let the applicant's traffic engineer speak more about this. But again, it's currently operating, I believe, at a level of service D, which is an acceptable delay at that, at that signalized intersection. I think you also have two relatively long queuing left turn lanes at that location. So that recommendation is part of the traffic study. But again, I'll let the applicant's traffic engineer discuss that. In regard to the Dire Road piece, you know, the applicant can absolutely pursue directional signage that we would, that we can allow, that I'd have to look at the sign code, but I believe some forms of directional signage are actually, aren't regulated necessarily if they're just directing traffic. We would consider it like a de minimis sign, right, that may just be allowed, but we'd, I'd have to, I'd have to analyze that more to give you an appropriate answer on it.
Councilmember Fay.
Following up on the traffic and getting in and out of there, is there any effort to direct traffic to go in on and out on Cherry rather than Dillon?
I, I don't believe there is, but you'd have to, we'd have to ask the traffic engineer about their, their assumptions and their models with the traffic study.
Okay, because that would come in at the north end of the parking lot, so.
Other questions? Just Councilwoman Cooperman?
A few questions. One question, we don't require any kind of special review for a drive-through, do we?
We do not, no. Yeah, for a drive-through use, no, no.
Okay, that's fine. And then there was a mention about pedestrian improvements near the proposed fueling station. Could you just point those out to me?
Yeah, absolutely. If we can, if I can share the screen again, Jenny? So I think you'll see this sidewalk here and then again, crossing where that, the exit of the drive-through is, is where that new pedestrian connection will be, or that revised pedestrian connection, rather.
Okay, thank you. And then another question, are they, is it proposed to install any new lighting on the site?
There, we'd have to ask the applicant about the lighting. I can tell you that there is a photometric sheet that's associated with the PUD that meets all of our, all of our lighting standards right now for the commercial district. I do believe they have specs for new lighting on there as well, yes. But they, it satisfies all of our standards in the CDDSG at the moment.
Right, okay. I mean, I'm curious if, you know, if, if there is new lighting, whether it's full cutoff and whether it has warm temperatures, but.
I can, I can review the PUD for you if that's okay and, and tell you where it's at, if that's okay, yeah.
Okay. Let's see, I had, I thought I had another question or two. Yeah, so the, the extension of the, I guess the, is it the right turn lane on, is that correct, from Centennial onto McHastlin?
The, yeah, the left turn lane.
Sorry.
That would be that northbound, I'm sorry, eastbound on Centennial Parkway that would be turning northbound on McHastlin is this queuing lane here.
Okay, got it. That's helpful, thank you. I, I realized I didn't have a question. One other question, so there, I think there's some on-street parking around the site. And I'm just kind of curious, you know, given the, the parking waiver, if we have any expectations around the usage of that on-street parking or any concerns about it or not.
Staff didn't consider on-street parking? I'm assuming you're referring to Century Place that's to the west side?
Yeah, on Centennial Parkway, I believe there's also some.
And further up Centennial Parkway as well. We, we didn't consider off-street parking at all in our analysis, and the applicant indicated that their proposed number of spaces was sufficient to serve the business.
Okay, that's fine, too. Sorry, a couple more. Okay, so I think my other ones are about the gas station. One of them, can you point out where the fuel tank vent would be?
These would be the subsurface fuel tanks.
Okay. And then, could you go to the slide that shows the, the existing gas stations and the proposed new one? Yeah, so your second bullet point doesn't agree with what is in the Lewisville municipal code. When I went there to read it, it says specifically about the, the 1,000-foot spacing, it reads, includes a gasoline, gasoline or automobile service station as an integral part of the retail center. Doesn't say, it has different language from the, the item just above about accessory. Sorry. Where did it say that? Yeah, it, it, it has different language or is it, yeah. So I, I don't know.
Yeah, I would say, you know, staff's interpretation of, I thank you for calling that out, first and foremost. What I would say is that we, you know, I think general land use interpretations, we would consider the fueling station to be ancillary and in the event of the 80,000-square-foot single-use retail, we would consider that the primary use with that gasoline service station being accessory to, again, that overall single-use retailer. Happy to have further discussions about what, integral, or I think that's the language of it, what you, how you feel that should be interpreted, but I think that was staff's, staff's view of that section.
Right, okay. And just as a slight follow-up, so how do you, I'm just trying, wondering about sort of how I should think about the, the waiver in this particular part of the code? You know, like, there are waivers that they're requesting for parking and for signage and other things. Should I think about this waiver in the same kind of way, or would you think about it in a different way?
I would say no, and I would say that we probably could have used better language than waived, would, would probably be, I would say exempt, would, would probably have been the more appropriate language to include on this particular slide, but this would not require a waiver per the language. That's at least my interpretation, that this would not be a waiver that we would review against the traditional waiver criteria of being a superior design and/or benefit to the city, which is how we typically view waivers.
Okay, I think that's good for now, thanks.
Yeah, just for clarification, I think the, certainly the sign waiver is in the criteria and the staff's recommendations are on page nine of the staff memo. That's page 161 of the PDF.
Did I answer your question appropriately, Councilor Cooperman, about the waivers? I may have misinterpreted that. Were you asking about the waivers in general? Or were you asking about the language on bullet point two?
I was asking about, you know, I mean, the language in the code does say this requirement may be waived if the proposed gas station, blah, blah, blah. So it, you know, the code uses the terminology waiver, and I'm just wondering if I should think about that section of code in this, or that type of waiver as, in the same way as I think about, say, waiving the sign code for.
Yeah, we haven't interpreted that to mean the same as waived and waiver in this, in this instance.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I understood that.
So the, the exemption from the 1,000-foot spacing does not require a waiver. However, I think the language of, of that section of code specifically uses the term waived. It's saying that if, if it's, if it's ancillary or integral, integrated into a single-use retailer, the spacing requirement is waived. Again, we're, that's not actually a waiver that we're requiring, it's just embedded in the ordinance. This particular fueling service station is exempt from the 1,000-foot spacing.
Councilmember Hanleyton?
Thank you, mayor. So how have you thought about pedestrian traffic from, I'm thinking where the bus station and the Cinebera and future CU housing, family-oriented housing, graduate student-oriented housing? How do you envision those folks moving there? Because they will not go down to the stoplight and cross the road and go back up.
Yeah.
You know, I'll just add that there's a lot of thought to that question going into the comprehensive plan. So there's a lot of contemplation of how to connect the, you know, the CU property to this property and other development to the north. So there's not a specific improvement called for, but it's definitely something that through the comprehensive plan, we want to identify a future project when the CU development comes in to enhance that connection.
So help me to understand what the responsibility is of a developer in this scenario, right? When future planning's still underway?
Yeah, typically, you know, a, a development like this, we're looking for the developer to make improvements within their property boundary especially. You know, the, the greater infrastructure outside of their property boundary, not exclusively, but typically is done by a separate process. The, what's different is if you identify something through a traffic study, like the turn lane, to maintain level of service. So traditionally, we'll ask a developer to make those types of improvements. But more of these regional kind of multimodal connections that we want to promote, that's probably going to be a separate process, is how we would typically do it.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you both.
Councilmember Haffner?
Yeah, just one question from me, which is, can you, or maybe the city attorney, can help us step through, how does the development agreement get filled in in terms of the exhibits? Who does that? Who approves it and so on?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, we are still working through cost estimates and the public improvement requirements. And so those are currently under review. Once our public works team and our engineers have signed off on that, we'll record all those documents at once. So we'll, we'll take the approved public works documents that show those civil engineering plans with that associated cost estimate, attach that exhibit to the development agreement, and then record that when that is approved.
So, so it's just a staff approval of the, of the actual development agreement?
It's a staff approval of the actual public improvement plans that are associated with the development agreement. The development agreement, as it stands right now, has been reviewed with references to the exhibit for the staff-level approval of those public improvement plans.
I think we're saying, are we saying the same thing? Staff is going to review and improve, review and approve the attachments to the development agreement? I mean, that's where all the detail is.
Correct. Correct, yeah.
Okay.
That's correct.
Other questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Curran.
It's not necessarily for staff, it's, it is for maybe the architects and you want to wait until they do the presentation?
We'll get to those in just a sec. If there's any other questions for, any other questions for Matt? Okay, because I, I think we have, as I understand, at least what I've heard so far, we've need to hear a little bit from the traffic engineer and I think from, from the applicant generally about lighting, whoever's in charge of that, because that's something that Councilmember Cooperman asked. So if the applicants, why don't, why don't we start with the traffic engineer? Because I think that has come up, obviously, in some of the public comments.
So our traffic engineer is Brian Haran. He is attending virtually, so we'll get him patched in right now.
Can you say that again? I didn't hear you.
Our traffic engineer is Brian Haran, and he is on virtual.
Oh, right, Brian, he, he's the one who's. Oh, right, Brian, he's the one who's raised his hand. That's fine. He's now gone.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
I appreciate the opportunity to address some of the questions and happy to answer any additional. I'll start sort of on the west side of Dillon and work my way over to McCaslin.
Just for a second, let's, can we get, can we get that slide up on the other part of the screen? Or is that not possible? I don't want to make things more complicated, but it, sometimes it's, if we're talking about traffic, it's nice to have the layout.
Yeah.
I can do this slide on one screen and him on another screen? I can't split the screen.
All right. You don't need to look at me. I can turn my video off.
I appreciate that sacrifice. I would do the same. Go ahead.
So, I can't see what you all are looking at, but.
That would be a problem, probably.
But I have a, I have an aerial I'm looking at. So hopefully, we can, we can talk through this. I'll say to address sort of the site trip comment on where we assign traffic. As a general rule, we want to assign traffic to any possible movement that might be made so that we can identify any problem areas, any opportunities for improvements. And then we, you know, using engineering judgment, assign heavier volumes to those movements that are more likely. We try to take a conservative approach to make sure that we can identify any improvements such as the eastbound left from Centennial onto McCaslin that was identified in the study. Additionally, as Matt mentioned, we identified opportunities for signal retiming at Dillon and McCaslin. So, the comments from the public were noted in the traffic study. I'll also add that we've kind of along with, or, you know, alongside this project, we've been working with staff to identify improvements along Dillon. That wouldn't necessarily serve this project, but because it's in our study area, we're taking a look at the signal retiming as well as some other improvements that the town may want to consider. So, we've made that analysis available. And as recently as this morning, have been working with the town to come up with, you know, timing for these improvements and what those might look like. So, we, the study has identified all improvements that would be necessary to support the proposed development. But I want to ensure, council, that we are actually continuing to work with staff to figure out timing of future improvements in the area.
Okay. Other questions? Councilmember Kern, you had raised some initial questions.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate this and appreciate the work that's going into it. Ideally, this store will be so popular that this is actually something we need traffic experts dealing with. But it's the continuation or adding additional thought and signage. The concern would be when people are coming out of King Supers, it's finding, like, making that left onto Dillon towards McCaslin that it is not an easy thing to do currently. And there's very few cars there, and it's still really difficult. Whether thought had gone into how to improve that flow, like, where that traffic is being routed, how are they getting onto, what is that, eastbound Dillon to get back to McCaslin? Or are you going to be directing people north to, what is it, Centennial? Yes, Centennial Parkway? And then out on Centennial? I'm just curious to know how that's going to work, how that traffic flow is. Are you trying to make them do a big circle or come back out? Which is what a lot of people used to do, is they would come out of Lowe's, is come, you know, out and turn left on Dillon.
Sure, yeah. The, I appreciate the question. The focus right now is on optimizing the signal timing. So, the difficulty you're describing is likely due to not enough green time for that approach. There's some other improvements that the town might be considering in that area. So, we're looking at that, we're basically trying to future-proof that intersection. So, a timing improvement that may work in the short term may not work for the long term. So, part of that recommendation of continuous monitoring for that one is to continue to future-proof that intersection. And, you know, while maintaining flow along McCaslin, which is a high priority, but allowing people on the side streets east-west to get, to get out.
And did you also study the intersection to the north, so the Centennial Parkway and McCaslin, for the feasibility? If people are, you know, waiting in a line or they see there's a lot of cars, they may go straight to the next traffic light to turn left to get into the new King Supers?
Yep, that was, that was part of our study.
And you found, again, it's just, like, just a matter of timing would help with that as well?
Yeah, including that turn lane improvement that we're currently designing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Just while we're on traffic, hoping there is, you know, signage solutions for, basically, when you leave the new King Supers parking lot to the east, there's sort of an unnamed road that runs, you know, between Murphy's Tap House and King Supers. If you go southbound, you run into Dillon in the median and cannot turn left. You have to turn right and then a U-turn. It's a mess. So, anytime, you know, if I leave Murphy's, I haven't visited Lowe's for a while. If I leave Murphy's and take a left, it's like, oh, man, I can't take a left on Dillon. And it's, you know, it's one of those things that I live here and I make that mistake. Certainly lots of people make that mistake. So, that seems like a really good area for, you know, signage to point people away from that error because it seems like making a hole in that median so that people can actually turn left on Dillon is probably not the right choice. That usually, those are designed that way intentionally. So, that's the one that I think about. So, similar to like, people drive into my neighborhood up on Dyer, people take a right on Dillon and then a U-turn. These are like things that we notice as residents here. So hopefully that one will be addressed. But otherwise, you know, I assume all the major intersections along McCaslin at both Cherry slash Centennial and at Dillon are going to be, you know, it's a lot with the city to just work on timing of lights and making sure that all flows correctly. But, you know, I think it'd be pretty drastic to have, say, a third turn lane or that can, we're not seeing that likely level of change, correct? Anyone can answer that, that not looking at, at a third turn lane necessarily?
That's correct.
Okay. That's it for me.
Other questions of the traffic engineer? Thank you, Mr. Ann. Are there questions for the applicant? We had the question about lighting, for example, that may be for the architect. But whoever handles lighting for the applicant?
I'm not a photometric engineer, but we can get this answered. So, the lights, we will keep the existing poles on-site. Then we will be proposing to replace the heads. The replaced heads will be with current code. They'll meet the current requirements.
Does that answer your question? Or shall we ask staff to clarify? Can you clarify the lighting that's required there?
So, in part of staff's review, we reviewed the photometric. The photometric is aligned with standards. As far as the, if the applicant is replacing the, the light packs on top of the poles, we would probably just want to ensure that those are full-cut-off, downcast light packs if they are replacing those.
Councilmember Cooperman, does that address the question you had?
Yes, that does.
Okay. Are there other questions that anybody has for the applicant? Yes, Councilmember Kern?
Thank you. So, I appreciate all of this and also actually the work to bringing this to the community. I just want to throw that out there. I think a lot of people are very excited. I do, I hear a lot of conversation within the community because people just want to know, like, oh, is this going to look like the marketplace in Nevada? Is this going to look at the marketplace in Erie, you know, out by I-25? And I think from what we, and a lot of the community saw this now, the hard answer is no, it will not look like that because you are trying to most cost-effectively utilize the current building and repurpose. Is that probably the primary reason?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Because one of the first things that pops out is it looks really different. A lot, a lot more industrial and less charming than a lot of your other marketplaces are around. But I wanted to know, one of the things that has been in a lot of other locations, which I'm not seeing in these plans, is like an outdoor attached kind of eating space for the to-go foods and things like that? Is that something that's also being planned for this?
That's a great question. I'd like to defer that one to Brian Young with Architecture, if we could.
Hi, I'm Brian Young, the architect with Neos Design Group. Currently, no, there is no outdoor seating or eating area like you'd see on some of the other marketplaces.
Okay. Quick answer.
Yep.
Okay. And it's not something that, for some reason, isn't in the design now, but is, it is part of King Supers wishes to do that? The reason I'm asking is just the aesthetics and the competition with the other restaurants in the area.
Yeah, there is interior seating. It's small areas on the inside, but there is not an exterior one for, for that kind of purpose, for outdoor seating, like a restaurant-type style situation, I guess.
This is, and I'm sorry, this is a getting into the weeds kind of question. It goes back to the aesthetics of the building. Are the, these really industrial colors also like hardened fast into the plan versus this softer, warmer feel that the other properties have? Is that part of the requirement of the, the development in Centennial Valley or?
Not necessarily. So, the colors are part of the Kroger, King Supers standard color palette that they use on their prototypes and other, you know, different enterprise-wide, different buildings. So, those are based on just the standard colors that Kroger prefers to use. The thing that's a little misleading is it's kind of tough to see in some of those renderings, the actual colors, because when it's on a building, it definitely renders differently. And it's going to look warmer and softer and not as harsh, I guess, is kind of what you're saying coming across. So, it'll definitely have more earth tones. It'll definitely blend a lot better with the surrounding architecture of the other buildings.
And the signage that is going to be indicating where people do the pickup? In this, it looks like it's this real neon blue?
It is a standard, again, it's a Kroger standard color, blue. It's a custom color, actually.
I guess I've just, it's a good thing, I've never noticed it at the other ones. So, must not be something that is going to be too in my face when we're, when we're driving around. Okay, thank you for your help. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Just to put a finer point on that. The, the colors that are here are consistent with the requirements for the PUD.
Yeah, so the commercial design guidelines require muted colors. There's no specific reference to any color types in there. The blue on the corner is a bit unique. But staff didn't feel it was necessarily unique enough to ask for an alteration and/or require a waiver from the design guidelines because of the overall compliance for the rest of the building.
Presumably, the pickup will result in less need to park and a little faster cycling through there, which probably will help the, well, it certainly explains a little bit about the desire for less, fewer parking spaces, I think. Yep. Are there other questions? Councilmember Cooperman?
Yeah, I just have one question for the applicant, which is going back to the, our code on gas stations. So, you know, as I, as I was reading the code before, right, the 1,000-foot buffer requirement can be waived, right, if the gasoline station, right, is an integral part of the retail center. So, I am interested in the applicant explaining how the gas station is an integral part of the retail center.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Carl Schmidtline with Galloway and Company. So, the King Supers fueling facility is, I guess, to help answer the question, it is truly part of the, the business associated with the grocery store. So, they are tied in from a point-of-service perspective. The, also, the kiosk attendant is in direct communication constantly with the interior of the store. So, as they need, you know, breaks, whatever that might be, or assistance, they're in communication or they send somebody from the store out to the kiosk to relieve them. But everything is centrally, I guess, ran, even all the compliance, the continuous 24-hour monitoring, even the video surveillance that they have underneath the canopy there. It is all tied back to the store. And then everything ties back to Kroger overall. So, all the monitoring that they're doing with that fuel facility as well. But it truly is an accessory use. It's not operated separately by any means. It is operated by the same business. Yeah, if that helps to answer that.
I mean, maybe I can just tend to ask a more blunt question. I mean, you know, so you came forward with an application that includes the fueling station. And so I assume that you, you know, you didn't want to come forward or you wouldn't come forward with a similar application that did not include it?
That is correct. I would say any new stores being proposed within the, you know, front-range area by King Supers, I would say at this point, 100% of those includes a fuel facility. For any stores that are located out there, they're always looking to add that accessory use. I don't know what that exact number is that do not have one at this time. But if, I will say that if it doesn't have one nearby, they are always looking to add that. And it is because of the point system that works in association with the grocery store.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Why don't we take it back to council? Councilmember Hefner?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I appreciate the detailed packet and presentations. I'm satisfied with the PUD application and ready to approve that. The one thing I'd like to raise for consideration is whether we approve the development agreement as it sits in our packet, which is missing the list of public improvements, or we ask for that to come back even on consent with the list appended. I'd personally like to see it. I don't think I'm going to have changes to it, but I would like to sort of see the entire development agreement once it's finished and subject to any objections from our staff as to timing. That would be my request. And otherwise, I'm happy with what's before us.
Do you have any staff input on that suggestion?
So, I think the length of the lane is dictated in the traffic study. So, it's really just getting the final design, engineering design elements down. And it's really just going to be that one improvement that's in the development agreement. So, it's going to have a graphic that shows it as well as the cost estimate. So that if you feel like you want to review the cost estimate and the final design, but I think we can tell you, I mean, we know the location and the length of the lane improvement.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think my proposal would be to see it as a consent item, just so that it hits our desk. I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, that it's not terribly complicated. But just if we're approving the agreement, I'd sort of like to see the whole thing.
I guess, following up, this is, I guess, following up on points made by Councilmember Hefner and the Mayor Protem. We haven't talked at length or really at all about improvements on the south side and that the one median, which is not going to be split, I would gather. That's, I mean, and I want to be careful not to stray from our, what's before us. But in terms of public improvement, I don't know whether there's any, I guess I have some concern about how that's actually going to work. Although, you know, it might be great for some traffic over at Home Depot. If we could just sort of route people from King Supers over to Home Depot, that would be wonderful for Home Depot. But that's not really, you know, in all seriousness, not.
Are you talking about trying to route customers to? Are you talking about trying to route customers to a certain road for access?
Well, yeah, I mean, when, when folks exit, I guess, the parking lot, one way they could go is toward, it's toward Dillon, right? And they're going to run into that median, where they're going to have to turn right and then...
So, if you're coming out of the parking lot, you can turn eastbound. It's only if you get on that interior private road that you run into that issue.
Yeah.
So, I think that that is a, maybe a potential private directional sign that wouldn't necessarily, would be exempt from our sign code, and we can talk to the applicant about potentially putting in a directional sign. I'm not, I don't want to commit to exactly where or what it would be, because we'd have to look at that.
No, I understand. I think I follow how we, how we manage that. It's a, it's a question of making sure people don't go that way and through signage, and that, that shouldn't be ter, that's not an improvement issue.
Right, yeah, and you know, the Lowe's used to be there, and it probably won't have as much traffic as this business, but it did, you know, I don't think we were aware of any big issues, you know, safety issues with the functioning when the Lowe's was there, so it's also something we can monitor and try to address if a safety issue arises, something we would typically do.
Maybe it's just the Mayor Pro Tem and me that do that, yeah. All right. We're not going to make policy around the two of us, I think. Go ahead.
Yeah, I generally agree. I think it's a solid PUD, and I think what's kind of lost in the, in this is, again, the enthusiasm that, you know, we're just really excited for King Supers marketplace. It's a huge win for our community and also, you know, for our tax revenue, which is not to say that, like, cool, no rules apply, like, we're applying the rules and we're doing a good job of that, and I appreciate that, but also, like, this is very exciting, and we're really excited to have you guys come, and the building is sort of set back, and so I can understand those signage, you know, needing to have some signage to get people to, you know, understand that there's a very important building to us, kind of hidden back behind the first row of those businesses on McCaslin. I'm disappointed you guys didn't take my advice and just buy the Murphys, and then we could just all be cool, but, you know, what can we do? But otherwise, I understand this, and when we were dealing with the gas station limitations, I mean, this is only the sixth in the city right now anyway, but, but were it to be the seventh, right, we carved this out in hopes of a King Supers marketplace, if I'm being honest, or something quite similar, because we didn't want, we didn't necessarily want any more gas stations, but we also didn't want to lose King Supers marketplace, because there's, we're not allowing gas stations. So, I feel it's like, we're not super excited about it, we're not excited about the location. It doesn't seem to serve our community as well as it could have if the Murphys didn't exist, but Murphy's is allowed to exist, and they went through their process just fine, right? So, I think it's just hard, and I think we're all saying those things out loud, and that's fine, but you're within your rights to have this gas station there, and we want it to go well, and we, and we understand the business model, and we're excited for the mutual success that we'll all have, and I trust staff and you guys to make the traffic work. As you kind of pointed out, Judy, it's to your benefit that the traffic works well. It's to our benefit that the traffic works well. It's important to our residents that their residential traffic still works well. You know, CU is a whole other thing over the next three, four, or five years, that that's going to add their own traffic, and we want all of this to work well, right? So, just continue to be good neighbors and make sure we get it, get it all right, but I'm in support of this PUD and very excited about it.
Others? Any other comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Faye.
I just want to add my thanks for coming into Louisville. I think it's going to be a wonderful addition. I live very close to the new King Supers, and I will say that having gone to Murphy's for dinner multiple times, I know that I...
Not the gas station, right?
Not the gas station, no. The Tap House. I know that when I come out of their parking lot, I turn north and come out on Centennial onto McCaslin, and I've never had any issue with making a left-hand turn onto McCaslin. So, if you could direct people to go out that way instead of coming down to Dillon, it might make things easier.
Councilmember Faye Hee is a lot smarter than the Mayor Pro Tem or I am. I think that's the lesson there. Yes, Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. Speaking of using that road to divert traffic to the north to allow it to maybe flow back towards 36 or either way on McCaslin, is the plan, and I am so sorry if I missed this in here, and it tells me this, that private road is a disaster right now. Is it going to be redone? And I don't mean just like resurfaced. It is horrible to drive on, and it is difficult, and if somebody has a carload of groceries and eggs are on the top, they're going to break. I'm just saying. So, is there anything that you're planning to do to make that an actual drivable or even bikeable, like, you know, for people who are going to be coming and going with their bikes? Are you planning on fixing that for us? Because I agree. I think a lot of the people who are not heading back to 36 or Superior will be taking that private road of yours to the north and turning on Century and then getting on McCaslin there.
And we're talking about the road on the property?
Yeah, the road that is literally in between Murphy's Tap House, Murphy's Gas Station, and your parking lot. So, I think that is part of that property. Is that right, Matt? That piece of road is their property?
It is. It's, yeah, it is a private access road or a private access drive, and it provides access to all of those owners. There's probably some more details from a private perspective on how that all plays out with all the property owners in that area, but yes.
King Supers exclusively will, or Kroger will not be exclusively owner? It's like everybody along there owns that?
We probably have to ask the property owners about that.
Sure. Thanks, Jeff. Hi, Jeff Sheets with Coblen Company. That is a private drive, and it's actually all in, which was formerly the Lowe's property, which will now be the King Supers property. There's a private set of declarations, and those declarations require that the property owner, now King Supers, maintain that road and then build back on a pro-rata basis to the pads. So, Lowe's was horrific in maintaining that road.
Yes, sir, they were.
Yes, and you can see that, and I can see that, and you can see it on that access road that goes out to McCaslin, and there's a little median there, weeds as tall as I am. So, I think you'll find Kings is going to do a much better job.
Great. So, they are, you do believe that they are planning to redo that, and, because I think it's not just paving, it is actually leveling the road out, too, to make it more drivable with the big ups and downs and...
Usually, that can occur when they grind them, but, I mean, they can even it out, but notwithstanding, they're required to maintain and keep that road in good, good shape.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And just, I have one more question probably for staff. So, I'm just curious, you know, so we, there's the development agreement around that left turn lane, which is an off-site improvement. So, you know, how do we decide, like, what kind of off-site improvements might be made or might not be made? You know, do they sort of volunteer to do that, or is it a negotiation?
In this particular case, it was a direct result of the traffic impact study, a recommendation that came out of the traffic impact study.
Right, but, I mean, I understand that, but like, does that require them to do that off-site improvement, or?
The traffic study is just a recommendation. We mandated it as a condition of this particular PUD that they have to, that they have to implement that recommendation from the traffic impact study, yes.
Okay.
We specifically asked them to do that.
Thanks.
I guess I have one question that kind of goes to Councilmember Hefner's point. Ultimately, who's going to be financially responsible for the improvements on extending the turn lane, the left turn lane?
The applicant will be. Yeah, so we will. So, we have an exhibit and a cost estimate right now. The only thing we don't have are the finalized improvement plans that would match that exhibit, but part of that agreement includes a letter of credit or a collateral payment with a 15% to 30% contingency directly related to that cost improvement. We require that payment prior to recording that agreement. So, that will be, so the applicant will, will provide that, that, those funds to us directly based on that cost estimate that's directly tied to the public improvements.
You understand what we're concerned about, right? And I'm sure the applicant does, and I'm sure Mr. Hefner is, that's part of what's undergirding the suggestion that he made. You know, I guess what I, the only thing I would ask is, I mean, is it's, you know, is it standard practice to include all of those essentially kind of guarantees and not to have what we have yet to do included in the packet at the time of passage?
So, I think the best, the best practice is to have the exhibits and the cost estimates in the agreement. You know, we put in the resolution that it was, it's in a whereas clause, that it would be deferred to the city engineer to make those final decisions. I would say that if you look back at how the city typically does this, that from time to time, we don't have final exhibits, and it gets deferred to city engineer approval. I think we're trying to be more explicit, maybe we didn't do quite as, and part of it, too, is timing. We're always trying to get these applications in front of the city council as quickly as possible. It's a customer service thing as well. Sometimes it takes the Public Works Department, due to their workload, quite a long time to get through final engineering documents. It's a very different type of review. So, we don't want to hold up these types of public hearings so that the applicant gets certainty to get those exhibits in. So, we're always kind of struggling with getting final exhibits in, honestly. So, we thought with this one, we would try with this proposal, where in the, in the resolution, the whereas clause acknowledges that the city engineer will be approving those final exhibits, but that you, the resolution notes that you would be approving the agreement, but deferring to the city engineer to do that is the intent.
In other words, it's not, it's not a condition in that, you know, the...
It's not a, it's not a formal condition like we do sometimes. We tried to build it into the actual approval resolution. I would say that if the expectation is to have all final exhibits on development, on the development applications when the PUD comes, I would be worried that that would really delay final approval of applications. So, I would just say that's something that we need to clarify in the, for a process improvement, not to drag this application into that discussion.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. I'm not looking to hold anything up, but I'm mindful of the concern that Councilmember Hefner made. Councilmember Hefner, do you have something?
Yeah, just, just briefly to clarify, I have no quarrel with the process here, other than this is an important development. I'd just like to have a look at the final. I'm happy the PUD came to us now. If it doesn't cause a timing delay, I'm just suggesting we put it on a future consent agenda so we can all see it, and that's the extent of my suggestion. I don't think we need to change our process. I don't think we need final engineering on every development agreement. Certainly, this is just an important one.
Yeah, I would just ask, maybe for a point of clarification, is typically until we have the, we wouldn't record the PUD as well as the development agreement until it goes on consent. We'd also hold up recording the PUD, and I would just like to ask the applicant if there's any issues with recording, you know, waiting to record the PUD, because this could take a month or two, maybe, to get final exhibits and cost estimates. I don't know, and I don't know if the recording of the PUD delay would cause an issue.
What would the impact of that be if we did it that way? I mean, I...
Sorry, I didn't mean to ask a question, Mr. Mayor. I meant to see if you wanted to ask a question.
You did a nice job. No, you did a nice job. Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Sheets again. I would, I would encourage you not to delay it. Their, King Supers is anxious to pull permit and get this going as soon as they can. They've already submitted for their building permits, is my understanding. So, you know, typically, these, these developer agreements, we look at very closely because they are tied to the PUDs. We can't get our PUD done until typically we do that. We're also issuing a letter of credit, which is very dear to us, so we're tracking these very closely. So, I've been doing this for 40 years. I've never had a problem with this process. I mean, it works, and it allows the town to secure those improvements.
Yeah, Councilmember Hefner.
This would be my last question, just to understand, and then I'm going to drop it. So, you're saying if we do the resolution as drafted, you record the PUD immediately and then record the development agreement later on when it's finished?
No, we would, we would wait for the final exhibits to be done, but the delay would be having to bring it back for final approval for city council.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's just a question of putting, putting it on the next consent agenda. I mean, a few days is what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's a good point. Maybe it's only a couple of weeks, if you put it that way.
And I can add, too, if it's okay, that we do have the exhibit, we do have the cost estimate. We just wanted to go through one round of review or two rounds of our civil documents to ensure that that exhibit matches what is proposed on the, on, first and foremost, the estimate, but also the exhibit. So, I do think we're in a good position at this point to potentially put that on a consent agenda and not necessarily hold up the approvals at this point. I think, I think we're in a good position to do that, actually. So, I think that's, I think that we can do that without a significant delay.
That, that certainly works for me. I'm definitely not looking to delay anything.
All right, then. I am going to move to approve ordinance number 1890, excuse me, resolution number 32, series And I think that includes, yep, go ahead.
Mayor, may I read into the record the changes in the resolution?
Yes.
That are required to bring back the development agreement?
Please.
Okay. So, the title will be revised to delete and development agreement. The fourth and fifth recital will be deleted, both of which pertain to the development agreement. Section one will be revised to read, "The city council of the city of Louisville, Colorado does hereby approve the application for a planned unit development amendment, subject to the following conditions." Condition number one is actually, "The applicant shall include landscape screening on the property boundary at 585 McCaslin Boulevard, Murphy's Tap House." That was a recommendation coming from staff. And then, condition number two would be city council approval of the development agreement, and then section two of the resolution would be deleted.
Wait, just before I do that, maybe I should withdraw that for just a second. I need to close the public hearing before we do the motion. So, I would move for passage of resolution number 32, series 2025, with the modifications that the city attorney just recited.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Councilmember Faye Hee.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yeah, I don't think we can interrupt a vote for a comment. I did not see Mr. Cooperman's hand up. I'm glad to let him make a comment, but I want to make sure that we've started voting.
After some people have voted?
Pardon me?
Are you allowing a comment now?
Well...
After three people have voted?
I think it's better not to, not to do it. Let's go forward with the vote.
Then, yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dickinson.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yes. Is resolution number 33, series 2025, resolution approving planned unit development amendment to allow construction of a 16,294-square-foot industrial flex building at 517 South Arthur Avenue. Can open the public hearing, and Post, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes, I do. Again, good evening, Mayor and Councilors, Matt Post, community development team. The item before you tonight is approval of resolution 33, series 2025, recommending approval of a planned unit development amendment to allow construction of a 16,294-square-foot industrial flex building at 517 South Arthur Avenue. Some background... Some background on this particular property, the site is currently vacant. There are existing industrial developments north and south of this particular property. It is located in the Colorado Technological Center, and it is bound on the west by the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Rail Line. This property is part of an existing PUD, which was approved in 1992 and included this site as a phase of the building to the south. That phase was never built out, and so this site has been vacant the entire time. The slide on this image shows the proposed site plan, including landscaping. You can see the building favors the north side of the site. This would be due to easements on the south side of the site, specifically a 30-foot sewer easement, with, with some additional easements in there as well where access is proposed. This, again, proposal, 16,294 square foot building, roughly 14,700 square feet of this building will be warehouse space, and the remaining will be dedicated to support office space. As I believe the council is aware, every property in the CTC requires detention on each individual site regardless of size, and so the applicant has detention proposed on the east side of this site between the building and South Arthur Avenue. The south side of the site, obviously occupied by the parking area and then access into the building. Main entrance is at the southeast corner. We'll see some elevations of that. They include a storefront entry system here with a, an enhanced design for our industrial area. As part of this development, the applicant is proposing 14 parking spaces pursuant to the industrial design guidelines. There's 22 to 23 parking spaces would be required depending on the final size of this building. The applicant has indicated that based on their experience in developing these particular uses, that this parking is sufficient to support their business uses, and as such, they're requesting a parking reduction. We'll cover that in, in later slides. They are also providing their required electric vehicle parking on this site. Jumping into proposal here, this is a tilt-up concrete construction design. The building will be designed with, again, varied patterns, form liners, accent colors, and articulation. Again, that primary storefront system you can see is visible on that top elevation. The elevations include variations in parapet height, articulation in the facade, and then that additional transparency, which satisfy our industrial zone district design standards. There's a rendering provided by the applicant that's a southeast elevation that shows what that building will look like with complete. You can also see a plaza area that will include seating and additional landscaping, which is also a requirement of our industrial design standards. Approximately 24% of the site is landscaped, which is just below the required 25% of the industrial design guidelines. Some additional waivers here, we'll discuss those again in later slides. 22 trees are proposed where 24 are required. Again, this site is roughly 0.8 acres in size, so it's just a relatively small site in the CTC. So they are proposing 22 trees when 24 are required. We have a pretty significant buffer requirement between similar uses in the industrial zone district standards, which is where some of those tree requirements come from, and we'll discuss that waiver further. So 22 trees on site and 136 low water shrubs, perennials, and ornamental grasses are proposed. So the use of the space is a warehouse, which is permitted by right in the industrial zone district. We have a minor office use, which is considered ancillary and supportive of that warehouse use in the industrial design guidelines. Again, there's a detailed analysis in your staff packet, but we find this use to conform to use standards in the CTC. The applicant has requested a parking reduction, so we'll get into the parking reduction and waiver pieces here. So as has been stated, 22 to 23 spaces has, would be required. There's a rounding piece there, we'll say 23 spaces for the purpose of a code requirement. And the applicant is requesting a reduction to a total of 14 spaces in this particular request. The primary justification for the request or the reduction is, again, the minimal amount of office space that's proposed here. I think we're seeing a lot of office-type uses in the CTC at the moment, where you see a lot of parking, a lot of full parking. Those are supportive of office-type uses. And so, again, the, the applicant, he said, "The low amount of office space combined with the low employee density and limited visitor traffic associated with a warehouse use would support a parking reduction here." The facility is designed to be a light industrial operation with, again, that small administrative component. So, again, based on the applicant's justification and their experience developing similar uses along the front range and similar uses in the CTC that we observed to be generally overparked in some cases, staff support the request for a reduction in this case. In addition to the parking reduction, there are seven waivers requested. Again, I think a lot of these waivers are stemming from the overall size of the site. We have 0.8 acres here on this particular site. The first few waivers here are relatively standard. We actually generally support these waivers and request that applicants apply these. We have a nine-foot by 19-foot parking space requirement in the IDDSG. The applicant is reducing that to eight feet six by 17-foot six. Again, that's more in line with modern development standards. It also allows for a clear and unobstructed five-foot pedestrian path directly adjacent to the building. You can see that sidewalk that's on site there is actually six and a half feet wide. So the 17-foot six parking space allows for a one and a half foot bumper overhang, again, while maintaining an unobstructed five-foot path in that location. So, again, staff support the reduction to a more common parking size. We also have a requirement in our guidelines for two-way drive aisle width of 28 feet. And I think you all have seen this waiver request before. The applicant is requesting a reduction to 24 feet. That's supported by the Louisville Fire Protection District. There is fire access proposed on this site with a hammerhead at the end of the site. Louisville Fire requires a minimum of 24 feet. Again, that 24-foot two-way drive aisle width is a more standard two-way drive aisle width. There's also a driveway separation requirement between properties. Again, this is our industrial design guidelines, a 75-foot spacing between private drives is required. The applicant is proposing 42-foot spacing here. Our, again, staff support this waiver just based on the overall size of this site to allow reasonable development with the building located in relation to the access point. The driveway location was reviewed by our public works team, and they identified no operational or safety concerns with that configuration. So, again, staff are in support of the reduction of the spacing between private drives. The other requests here are, again, directly related to the size of the site and the proposed building. So as you are aware, there is a 10-foot buffer requirement in the industrial zone district between properties within the same zone district. This would apply to the north side and the south side of the property. The applicant is requesting a reduction from the required 10 feet to two and a half feet in the southwest corner of the site. You can see where the, where the, the drive aisle extends all the way furthest to the west there. That would reduce to two and a half feet. And then on the south side, it would reduce to seven feet six inches. The waiver request the applicant has proposed is an alternative, I'm sorry, as, as part of this waiver request, the applicant has proposed an alternative solution on that south side, which includes a row of dense mid-height shrub plantings that would effectively screen those two uses. Those plantings will range in height from five to 10 feet in height when, when mature. And so, again, that, that 10-foot, that, that would be a waiver from the 10-foot requirement on the south side. There's also trees that would be required there, every 30 linear feet. The applicant is proposing a row of trees on the west side of the site. Staff are generally in support of this to allow for access to the site, the small size that's proposed here, and then also just the consideration that the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railway is to the west of the site. Staff feel that there's adjacent negative impacts are reduced because of that rail line to the west. Regarding the reduction on the west, again, the BNSF rail line is there, and so staff do support that. The additional waiver request here is for the 15-foot rear setback requirement. On the west side of the property line, there is a 15-foot setback that's required. The applicant is proposing a setback of 13 feet six inches. That is for a small portion of the building on the south side of the site. I have an exhibit later on that you can see. It's a 13-foot, the setback will come to 13 feet six inches. Again, staff support this request because of the configuration of the lot. You can see the oblique or the tapered nature on the west side. We did work with the applicant. They'd actually initially proposed a significantly more intrusive setback encroachment that we did not support in this particular circumstance. So we, we worked with, with the applicant, and they reduced it to 13 six. But, again, you'll see a better exhibit of that on later slides. From a landscape coverage perspective, again, 25% is required. The applicant is requesting 24% based on the overall size of the site, 22 trees and 136 low water shrubs. Staff support this request as well. And that 24 trees are required, where the applicant is proposing 22. Again, because of the overall size of the site, there are no trees on this site right now. The applicant will plant 22 trees here, and then, again, in addition to all those low water shrubs, staff do support that waiver request as well. So we reviewed this application again for compliance with the Louisville Municipal Code, PUD criteria in your staff packet, and then the industrial design guidelines. Of course, we found the application to be compliant with the waivers and the parking reduction as they've been requested on this particular site. And so with that, we recommend approval of resolution 33, series 2025, recommending approval of a PUD amendment to allow the construction of a 16,294 square foot industrial flex building and associated site improvements. Importantly, no development agreement associated with this particular PUD. So, no public improvements.
Thanks. Hold on, this may not be long to get back to here. Do we have any public comment? All right. Seeing none, any questions from council members concerning this item? Yes, Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah, I mean, reading through the waiver request, there's a lot, which is, I think, sort of not typical. A lot of these seem to make a lot of sense, kind of these like, well, a little oddly shaped, and we're trying to fit things in, and so these aren't like major issues, not a third story, it's not whatever, but it just seems like a lot of, a lot of waivers for, for one building, but they're, they're all relatively related. So parking reduction, I understand it's kind of because of use. The parking space minimum, can you repeat? Was that, did you say you, the city, requested that?
I would, I would say that we've, we, we, you know, a lot of times, we, we encourage applicants to reduce their impervious surface on site. Feel it's the more appropriate path forward in most circumstances. It reduces storm runoff, reduces their detention requirements, and that nine-by-19-foot requirement is generally outside of a typical development standard. Again, it's reflective of our industrial design guidelines adopted in the late 90s, early 2000s. Part of the reason that we make that request specifically is, is in relation to where the parking is proposed or how it's proposed, and so in this particular circumstance, you have head-end parking that's perpendicular to a walkway. I think we want to, we want to encourage an unobstructed five-foot pedestrian path on the site, and so we ask them, hey, instead of providing a 19-foot space in this location, can you actually extend your sidewalk by a foot and a half, allow for a one and a half foot bumper overhang, and a clear, unobstructed five-foot path? So we feel it as, as, we, we view it as a trade-off to allow a more pedestrian-friendly approach to the site and, and retain that unobstructed five-foot path. But, again, that bumper overhang still functionally allows for a deeper spot.
Yeah, well, so I'm, I'm reading waiver request number one is something specific for the building. Let's see, number four, kind of, again, sort of, request based on the shape of the building. Same with number five, the rear setback encroachment. Same with number six, the minim landscape requirement reduction. And then seven, the site and driveway access minimum. Again, that seems to be about, like, sort of the adjacent properties. It's very specific to this property, and even the perimeter landscaping. So the two that I'm curious about are, like, you know, I'm fine with all of these waivers. I think they all kind of make sense to me, but it seems that waivers two and three are the kind of thing that should be coming back to us as council as this rule just isn't great. Like, we shouldn't, someone shouldn't have to ask for a waiver if we're basically asking them to come for this, you know what I mean? Like, so I don't want this to affect this application. I think this is fine, but generally speaking, when, when we, when we grant waivers, I, I'm curious if this is something that we should be changing more globally. I don't mean to put a lot of work on any of us, but this just, you know, how many, are we going to be doing this all the time now? Are these, are these spaces just too big and we're going to be doing this all the time? So I'd love to see just a general change to that rule or, or, you know, and again, you can keep saying, we do this quite often, and that's maybe good enough, but, but that's just maybe food for thought for all of us moving forward. But I'm okay, you know, having talked through all those waivers. I think each one of the, I don't have a problem with any of those particular waivers. My only concern is when we do something about, like, parking spaces based on, like, use of the building, what if the use of the building changes over time and, and the parking spaces don't like so? They can never turn it into an office, or if they do, they'll need more parking spaces? Like, how are they going to get more parking spaces? So you're, it feels like we're kind of limiting the use and to have parking, but we often have parking based on use, right? Like residential versus commercial versus industrial. So it's a warehouse, it doesn't need as much parking, I buy that. Generally, we don't need as much parking as we normally do anywhere. So I'm, I'm fine, but I, that is my other concern. Maybe you can speak to the, like...
Yeah.
Just because of the specific use of a warehouse, we're going to allow fewer parking spots, what if it changes uses over time?
Yeah, that's, that's a valid concern. I would say the planning commission came, you know, had, had, had a similar concern. We did work with the applicant to, to determine whether or not additional parking spaces could be applied on site. Again, it would, it would have required a significant reduction in the size of the building, and, again, based on the overall size of the site. You know, the applicant asserted that it wasn't, didn't necessarily meet their criteria to actually market the building accordingly. And, of course, when you reduce the size of the building, you reduce the number of parking spaces, but it, it would have, it would have, it was a solution, for sure, that the applicant could have, could have presented, but we, we did discuss it. And, again, just based on the, the, the size of the site and the restrictions, we, we found it to be reasonable. I will say that, you know, if we get a request in for a change of use at the, at that particular building, it's probably something we're going to have to take a look at, right? We could potentially get a tenant refinish option. Why, I would say where we would scrutinize that would be if we get a tenant finish subsequent to this build, if this were to move forward tonight, that's a significant expansion of an office use outside of the industrial or warehouse use that's there. I think we would have to take a close look at that from a staff perspective.
Okay. I appreciate the work, and I, I support it generally.
Cooperman, and then Councilmember Hefner.
Yeah, I largely agree with what Councilor Dickinson just said. I think I can support the waivers. I do have a couple little questions about them, though, or about a couple of them. So not to, not to belabor the size of the parking spaces, but one question, so do our design guidelines specify the width of the pedestrian sidewalk, sidewalk?
So our, our, our design guidelines do not, and the industrial design guidelines, they, they don't. However, I think it is proper planning practice to ensure appropriate, appropriately sized sidewalks. And so I should also clarify, too, that I may be the one that requests those reduced parking sizes to, to support those wider sidewalks, specifically in scenarios like this, so.
And do the design guidelines require that the parking spots have, I don't know what they're called, you know, the bumpers that prevent you from going?
Yeah. You know, they don't, but, again, I would say that this is not currently in our ordinance, but past experience, for, for me at least, has shown that those bumpers, those parking blocks, deteriorate over time rapidly. We've, I've specifically asked applicants to not include those just for overall longevity of the site and raised curbs as opposed to those parking blocks.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it, I don't know, it, it seems a little bit like, you know, you're, you're making a bigger, like, you're not really changing the amount of impervious surface because you're just making a bigger sidewalk that someone can overhang, as opposed to making a larger parking spot. So, I mean, it's probably better because, you know, the sidewalk is larger, so if someone does overhang it, you still get a full-width sidewalk, right?
Yeah.
In that sense. Okay. The other one I wanted to ask about is the drive entry into the, into the site. So we recently saw another application in the CTC where they had a shared drive with a neighboring already developed site, and I was wondering if the applicant considered that possibility to share a drive with above the... that possibility to share a drive with above the north or south properties?
Yeah, I would say, I don't, I don't believe that the applicant did. Obviously, the adjacent property owner needs the consent to that. That's something we always encourage. If, if that opportunity is on the table, it's actually encouraged by the design guidelines. We, we'd love to see it to reduce drive cuts adjacent to a public right-of-way. You'd probably have to ask the applicant about whether or not they consulted with the adjacent property owner.
Okay. And then just two small questions. I don't know if you can answer this. I'm just curious, like, is there a reason you would have the parking on the south side as opposed to the north side? Like, is there a reason you wouldn't flip the orientation of the design?
Yeah, there's actually, and this is, it's highlighted in your staff packet as well, but there is, I don't know if I have, you can see it here, there is a thirty-foot sewer easement on the south side that would preclude any development. And so that would be the primary purpose for the orientation of the building and the parking area.
Okay. And then my last little question, also, I'm curious, it appeared to me that there is not going to be any gas connection to this building. Is that correct?
I'm not sure. We'd have to ask the applicant on that one. That would come further down the line in our building code review. The applicant can probably answer that question.
Thanks.
And I just want to note, too, I mentioned, I neglected to put the exhibit for the setback encroachment in this slide deck. It is in your staff packets, however. By the way, if you want to look at it in the staff report, there is an exhibit that shows the full extent of the encroachment. It's, I just want to, just so that you all know, I, I called it out as being relatively minor. You can see the exhibit in your, in your staff report.
I, like the others, I'm comfortable with the PUD and the waiver requests, and I just wanted to second the Mayor Protem's. Both thanks for, you know, identifying ways we can encourage folks to, to work within our guidelines, but do things in a way that's maybe better. But then also that we need to revisit the CDDSG and IDDSG from the late nineteen nineties that are just, you know, they're probably due, and we'll, we'll look forward to at some meeting in the future revising those.
I had a question about, are there, are there any other undeveloped parcels out at CTC that are remotely similar to this?
There are, actually, I think, I believe there's one just north of this that is similar in size, that is, that is vacant at the moment, yes. Not, not many.
We may, we may see some additional, depending on the use and all that. I was just curious about that. On, on the other question I had on the driveway separation between properties, that's a pretty substantial reduction, and I, I don't have any, you know, strong feeling about it, but I, I, it's, it just surprised me to see that that was, you know, that that was just, that that was acceptable, given that it's usually seventy. Is that, again, an issue that we're, we're dealing with just really outmoded?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know that I'm necessarily qualified to speak on whether or not that's, that's outdated. I will say that part of the consideration that went into that was the overall size of the site, again, and just the fact that it's, the actual frontage itself, if you take that seventy-five-foot spacing requirement, it's, again, incredibly restrictive for the actual development on the site. Were we to enforce that as it's written? I think the other considerations that went into account there were the number of parking spaces and the potential movement of vehicles there. I think if it was a different use, if, say, for example, we were considering a King Supers with the traffic congestion we saw, I think we would have taken a significantly closer look at a reduction in private driveway width like this, but.
I mean, I certainly think that the, the waivers are fully supportable and for the reasons that the staff has pointed out. Any other, we've got more?
I would just clarify, the property in the north, I believe, its driveway is on its southern border, and the property in the south, its driveway, it's on, on its northern border. So they, those two properties made it impossible for the middle property to have a driveway that, that work. So it seems like maybe, whatever. The error would have been on the previous ones, like, well, how could, how could someone develop in between you two? So that's the other reason, I think it's fine.
Senator Kern?
I'll wait if there's another question. I was just going to make a motion.
Please.
I move that we approve Resolution Number Thirty-Three, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five.
Second. I forgot to close the public hearing, but it is now closed. Any further discussion? Okay, then let's take a roll call.
Councilmember Kern?
Oh, wait, we don't need a roll call.
Yeah, it's a PUD. Yeah.
Yeah, we do, sorry.
Yes. Councilmember Cooperman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Next item is contractor licensing. Two, let's see, items under that. First is an ordinance, number eighteen ninety-five, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five, an ordinance amending Louisville Municipal Code, Chapter Five Point One Two, concerning contractor licenses. This is second reading and public hearing. And a resolution, Number Thirty-Four, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five, a resolution establishing insurance requirements for contractor licensing. And are there any disclosures among council members? Do we, if not, to the staff presentation? Director Zaccaro?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council, having a technical issue here. Let's see if I can figure it out. There we go. Okay, so we've got it all working now. Rob Zuccaro, Community Development Department, I'll be presenting on this item. So we have an ordinance and a resolution before you this evening. Again, this is second, second reading on this ordinance, and I'll explain the resolution. That wasn't included on first reading. But the, the idea is that staff has initiated some amendments to the contractor licensing requirements. One of the main impetus of that was that we wanted to make sure that we could check insurance, just to make sure that our contractors had insurance, because our code didn't allow that. They had to certify it, but we had no provisions that allowed us to actually check and verify if an issue occurred. So we did wrap in some additional amendments as well. So on first reading, council asked for some amendments to the first reading draft, which was to require proof of insurance to be submitted when they made their application, so that staff would verify that and also look at minimum amounts for the insurance. So we did come back with a proposal that would do that. It would set minimum insurance amounts by resolution, hence the resolution, so we didn't put it in the ordinance, so that it would be easier to change if we wanted to change the amounts. The other things that are in the ordinance that were in the first reading version was to update licensing test requirements to the twenty-eighteen code version or higher. There was a question at first reading about why don't we just always do the most recent version of the code? And talking to Chad Root, our building official, who couldn't be here this evening because he is on vacation, so he apologizes for not being able to be here, but he noted that many contractors will test out at, say, the twenty-eighteen version, they will lag behind. We'd have a really big compliance issue, I think, is the punchline. So he thought it was appropriate to set a baseline, but keep that for a while and not necessarily require the, you know, the twenty-one or the twenty-four version of the codes. So we did some research to see what other cities do as far as requiring insurance to be submitted with the application, as well as requiring minimum amounts. Looking at these local communities, Golden was the only one that doesn't require any insurance at all. They do have contractor licensing, they do not verify insurance, so they're probably the most similar to how we're operating right now. They don't even require certification, I don't believe. Superior, they don't require licensing, they have a registration program, but they do have a requirement to show proof of insurance, but they don't have a minimum amount. All the other jurisdictions we looked at had minimum amounts, and they also were verifying proof with the application. Longmont, so we've, basically, our proposal is modeling after Longmont, where a general contractor has a higher amount of insurance, and then single-trade contractors have a lower amount, so that's reflected in our proposal. So again, we are proposing this to provide additional protections for property owners, business owners, who are hiring contractors, just to make sure they are meeting some minimum A little bit of fiscal impact, we actually had a lot of discussion about fiscal impact because, you know, talking to our staff right now, just with our minimal requirements, they believe they're spending about five to ten hours, on average, per week, just administering our current process, which includes a lot of questions from contractors. The biggest thing is they don't have the correct testing, or they didn't submit the testing, and we're having to follow up with them before we issue. So there's a lot of back-and-forth communication. In twenty-twenty-four, we either issued or renewed over fifteen-hundred contractor licenses, collected over a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in fees. We do think that with the, if we do require that they submit proof of insurance and we're verifying that, there will be a fair amount of additional administrative work, mostly not in the, just reviewing the applications, but mostly when there's non-compliance, having to contact and follow up. Most of these, most of the jurisdictions also require that the city be listed on the certificate, which means we'll get notified if there's a change or they lose their insurance coverage, so then we would follow up on that as well. That could include a lot of verification in the field as far as issuing stop-work orders if they don't come into compliance. So there's quite a bit of administrative staff time, as well as some staff time for our building inspectors. Really what it came down to is we feel like if we're going to do this effectively, we would probably need a, a part-time permit tech. We estimate, we estimate that to be a forty to fifty thousand dollar fiscal impact to get a part-time building permit tech to help administer that program. So we did have some alternatives, a couple of alternatives that we're proposing, which are laid out here. But I'll go to the staff recommendation, which is basically that with, if there's a willingness to approve a part-time person to do this, we would recommend approval of the ordinance as drafted, where we are verifying insurance, following up, doing all that verification. That's how we've drafted it. Without a new part-time position, we think we'd struggle to do that effectively. We're worried it could impact customer service, so we'd recommend still requiring minimum amounts, but not requiring verification at the time of application. We still want to have the ability to ask for proof. So these are the two main options. What was in your packet reflects bullet number one. We actually emailed you very late this evening, and I gave a paper copy on the dais, an ordinance that would reflect the second bullet point, which, again, would allow us to ask for proof. If an issue came up, we would adopt minimum amounts by the resolution that is included, but we wouldn't be verifying during the application or renewal process. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Actually, why don't we take public comment quickly? First round of public comment. Okay, back to council. Any discussion? Yeah, go ahead, councilmember, or questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm hoping you can remind us, what risk, if any, is the city taking on by not moving forward with the part-time tech to verify all this information? Is there any risk for us if we don't do that? Like, if something happens with the contractor, are we held liable? No?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think, as the city attorney mentioned, there's probably no legal liability risk to the city. I think if we don't hire someone, there'll be, there'll be a heightened workload, which, again, could impact customer service and create staffing issues, so that's why we thought we'd need the extra capacity. We have two administrative staff in the department right now, and based on current workloads, I think it would be difficult to absorb the additional work. So I don't, I think that would be the risk, would be just the, the process and the customer service that we provide.
Yeah, I guess I should clarify, like, you need someone, additional people, to review, is what we're proposing. I'm saying if we don't go with that, and we don't, we remove the requirement for submission of proof of insurance as part of contractor license application, what risk are we taking on with that? Could someone come after us if their builder does something wrong?
No, there's no legal risk. We don't even have the ability to ask for a certificate of insurance or other proof of insurance right now under our current ordinance. And so that was really the impetus for the ordinance to begin with, is just to be able to ask, because contractors currently do self-certify that they're insured, but we have no way of checking if a question comes up.
Okay, that's helpful. I'm trying to weigh the risk and benefit of this FTE that would be needed for the additional work, so, okay, thank you.
I mean, you know, ask, maybe a different way of asking the question is, you know, what, as a policy matter, whose ox gets gored by us not checking this? I mean, is there, you know, is there a real detriment to anybody by or not, are not having a permit tech, are not checking the insurance? Or the, yeah, the insurance that they?
So I, I mean, I think the highest level of service is we check.
Yeah.
We, we ask for it, we check before we issue the license. That's the most protective of residents. It's just not something we've done, you know, to my knowledge, ever, and I'm not aware of any issues that have arisen, where, you know, people have issues with their contractors all the time, and there's lawsuits with their contractors all the time, and accidents. Most contractors have insurance. We've never been involved in that. So I think that the number of incidents that I'm aware of are, are probably low, but it is extra protection if we are checking it, if that helps contextualize it.
Protection for who?
Protection for the homeowner or the business owner who's hiring a contractor. Then they'll have, they'll have, they'll, when they, they can call and say, do they have a city license? Do they have minimum insurance? We could say yes, with more certainty. Like, right now, I think we could say, yes, they've certified, and we could also, with the second bullet, we could say, well, if you're concerned about it, we'll contact them and ask for a copy. This would allow us to do that, so.
Yeah, and I mean, that's, that makes, makes perfect sense to do it that way as opposed to having the tech, but I, but that's a value judgment that others will have something to say about, too. Councilmember Kern?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I think, just having, just, just giving you guys the ability, you know, within the charter, being allowed to ask for the, the insurance information, for me, is sufficient as a homeowner who's doing work. I, I would have an expectation that the city is making sure that people are licensed and that they are carrying the insurance, and if I wasn't sure, it would be nice to know that I could just call staff, and they're like, oh, we can verify that. If it's, if you don't already have a copy on file because they were doing some other job, I think that would be sufficient as a resident to make them feel confident in what is being provided for them. But I, I mean, if, I think if, if more of you were in favor of, of having a part-time employee, quick question, Rob, do you have additional reasons that you would want or need to utilize a, a part-time employee?
So I think, you know, that was one of the things that we suggested in the staff memo as well, that, you know, I think the workload would ebb and flow, and I, I don't, there's always additional work. So I, I think I suggested that it could help with workloads in general, which could help improve customer service or response times, having the additional person, especially when maybe the, the licensing workload wasn't as high. But there's no project or... But there's no project or specific need that I can point to.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem and Councilmember Fahy.
I would just like to, like, make a motion. We can continue to discuss the motion if people have other things they'd like to say. Is that appropriate?
Yes.
So, you can still comment after me, is all I'm saying. So, I would, I would move that we approve ordinance Number 1895, Series 2025, but the, help me, but the, the version for bullet two with an amendment to remove the requirement for submission of proof of insurance as part of a contractor license application.
Second.
Okay. I think we need, we needed the second round of public comment, even if it, for the purpose of just checking the box. I don't think there's going to be any public comment. Okay.
Then you want to close the public hearing, I guess?
Yes. And I'm going to close the public hearing now, and go ahead and make your motion now.
And sorry, and for clarification, there are two, there's an ordinance and then there's a resolution.
Yeah.
So.
You're moving.
The resolution is more pertaining to this, whereas the ordinance, just trying to understand.
The ordinance is what you received, an alternate version tonight, that would not require proof of insurance.
Okay. And then Resolution Number 34, establishing insurance requirements for contractor licenses.
It's still relevant because it, because we're setting minimum amounts.
Firing it, we're just not verifying it.
Right, but it does.
Okay, but still, one at a time. And this, and this amended version goes to the ordinance, not to the resolution?
Right.
Correct.
And I'm sorry, so.
So, do you want to make?
So, I'll make that motion, and then we can discuss, is my understanding.
Okay.
So, I will now move that we pass ordinance Number 1895, Series 2025, an ordinance amending Louisville Municipal Code, Chapter 5.12, concerning contractor licenses.
Second.
Any discussion?
Any further discussion? Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
Sorry, I didn't, I wanted to ask a question or two that I didn't get to.
Yep, we're entertaining comments, so I can think we can do that.
I was wondering, was there a particular reason that we chose to align with Longmont's amounts of insurance?
Well, I think for the general contractor, there was a clear trend of the $1 million for a single occurrence, $2 million for aggregate. And I, I think from staff's opinion, having single-trade contractors having to have a lesser amount just because they don't have as much responsibility on the job site typically made sense. But that, that was the only reason we weren't.
Yeah. Okay. And I wanted to go back to this issue about the, the code series that we require testing for. So, I certainly understand, Chad?
So, I think we can handle a few questions during the deliberation, but yeah, it is more proper to have questions while the public hearing is open.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so I certainly understand Chad Root's thoughts about, you know, not requiring the most recent version, testing for the most recent version. But it still seems to make sense to, and, you know, we don't, we don't, we don't adopt the most recent version right away. But I don't understand why we wouldn't require testing for the version that we've actually adopted, you know, especially since usually we're adopting it, as we just said, you know, after it's been approved by whatever organization.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I can add more, a lot more to my explanation other than we think it would be common, like, let's say we adopt the 24 codes this year, which is on your work plan. I think that would immediately make hundreds of contractors immediately out of compliance who are doing work in the city. And it would probably take them a while, maybe, to catch up. So, we'd have a very large non-compliance. I, I mean, that's, that's the reason. I mean, I, we, we could adopt the most recent version if that was council's preference, but it's not our recommendation for that reason.
Right. And, I mean, so when we adopt a new code, I mean, it's really on the contractor to figure out, right, what our current codes are, so, you know.
Yes, they still, this doesn't, yes, this doesn't change the need for them to meet the code requirement that we've adopted. It just, it creates a baseline standard of knowledge for the contractor. So, certainly, there's new codes in the 24 version or the 21 version that, you know, most contractors are probably aware of, even if they tested out at the 2018, when the 2018 version was the test version. So, we all, I guess, you know, I don't think, we think there'll be a, a bigger issue than normal with, you know, contractors meeting the code requirements during construction.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fahy, do you have a comment?
I just have a quick question. If the city is hiring a contractor to do work for the city, do we require proof of insurance?
Through our contract with them, we have insurance requirements, yes.
And they have to, they have to prove that they have the insurance?
Yes, most of our contract, if we're hiring a contractor, I believe most of our contracts would require they submit that proof.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Can we get a roll call on that motion?
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion concerning Resolution Number 20, 34, Series 25.
So moved.
Okay, second. Any discussion? All right. Let's take a roll call.
That was from the ordinance.
Okay, let's take a roll call.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay. Measure passes. Next item is city attorney's report.
No report, thank you.
Okay. Identification of future agenda items. Does anybody have a future agenda item they would like to identify? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.